Pollution Control Authority Special Meeting. Today is Monday, October 3rd. The time now is 6:16. Sheila Rolcall, please.
Vice Chairman Sikala.
Here.
Chairman Crisati.
Here.
Commissioner Despard.
Here.
Commissioner Finger.
Here.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Here.
Commissioner Ludwig.
Here.
Commissioner Mangini.
Here.
Commissioner Nelson.
Here.
Commissioner Pizner.
Here.
Commissioner Santinella.
Here.
Commissioner Ungeyer.
Here.
Eleven members present and none absent.
Item number two, ARPA funding for water pollution control.
So, Mr. Chairman, just for the setting the stage for the future discussion items, I wanted to just remind the town council that we have elected to put aside $2,920,906 under the category of wastewater treatment. We have also allocated $468,000 to be used in fiscal year '24 for one of the WPC pump stations. So, that was just an update in terms of people who are keeping track of numbers, and I do have that on the ARPA spreadsheet that will be distributed for the next part of your meeting. But you have the Director of Public Works and the Supervisor for Water Pollution Control who can now talk to you about how some of that money may be allocated, as well as giving you a general update about the status of the projects that are there.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number three, Water Pollution Control Authority Project Update. With us today is Todd Mathiessen and Public Works Director Donald Nunes. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Donald Nunes, Director of Public Works.
Todd Mathiessen, Superintendent of WPC.
Where would you like to start?
You can start right from the beginning. Give us your update of where we're at and all the progress that has been made. Thank you.
With his storied career, oh my goodness, we'd be here for a couple of days. But, good news is that we're just about ready to go out to bid for the Grapebrook Pump Station, which has been a long time coming. That is a relatively massive project, probably in the $2.5 million, $3 million range for projects. Quite detailed, where it just really, you know, like the spec section of the thing that's going out is over 1,000 pages long to build this thing. So, this isn't like a very, this is a very complicated project involving many different disciplines and how to handle all that waste while still keeping the pump station running while we're upgrading it, and it is quite a significant project. And after that, we're going to be looking for engineers to start the Sparkle Street Pump Station, which is going to be in a neighborhood of $2 to $2.5 million as well to rehab that one. Similar circumstances, very complicated, trying to keep these things running. We can't ask residents to stop flushing and using their facilities. So, just again, having all those things you don't think about, put into a spec book and get it out on the street is really very complicated. So, that's for the two major projects for the pump stations. Some good news with the WPCF upgrade. Right now, the permit has, multiple permits have been filed, and it's in Amtrak's hands right now. So, we're about two weeks away. I just told Attorney Talberg, we're about a couple of weeks away from actually starting the berm, which would only take three to five days to do, and we're, we need to finish that up before December. But everything is looking good right now. All the submittals are done. Everything is basically in line, waiting for that final signature to come back from Amtrak, which has been, as Attorney Talberg can attest, it has been a challenge on multiple levels, on our level, but then the contractors have a whole different level of people that we don't even, that Attorney Talberg and I don't even deal with. That's a whole separate part for the construction team that does that. So, there are another layer that we didn't really know about how much that happened, you know, what they're involved with. But they, once the people at our level take it and they send it down to people to get it done, that's again, a whole nother layer of review and whatever. But it's taken almost eight months since we got the go-ahead.
Wasn't it three years?
Pretty much three years. But the last eight months or so have been quite a challenge. But there is, you know, we're there. We're basically there, and when it starts, it's going to be over before everybody knows it, and we'll be done with the project. So, on that end, I'll let Todd talk about some of the fun things we got going on down elsewhere.
Sure. It's been a very challenging year. We were given almost no notification that the town of Manchester, the last remaining facility in the state of Connecticut, is no longer accepting wastewater screenings or grit. This turned the entire state upside down. There is no place to take this. I have been able to secure one year for 2023, and it's a trial basis in a landfill in Massachusetts that'll take this product. The state is, just put up their hands, and they're walking away from it. I don't know what we're going to do after that. Hopefully, they'll take it for a while. Our grit is considered a special waste. It's not a hazardous waste, but it's listed as a special waste in the state statutes.
Excuse me, Todd?
Yes.
Could you just talk into the mic, please?
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, it's a special waste, and you can get out of the special waste category if you do certain things to it. Basically, you would have to run it through like a dishwasher-type process, make it clean, then it becomes municipal waste. The problem with that, that's going to be very, very expensive. In the past, we would just call up and hire a contractor. They would come up with a vac truck. They would suck up all our grit out of our channels and drive it away. We'd never see it again. This year, we had to suck it up with our own equipment because nobody can take it. We dumped it on the washdown pad, and we had to attempt to dry it out ourselves because it has to pass a paint filter test before we could get rid of it one last time. So, we had to do that in August. We did get a couple odor complaints. What we're going to do for the springtime is we're going to purchase a hoop house to put over our washdown pad. Then, working with my staff, we think we can tie into the odor control building to get the odors down, to suck air out of that temporary building we're going to build, and dry our grit that way to get us through next year while we try to find a more permanent solution. A permanent solution would be to purchase equipment, but we're talking a multimillion-dollar upgrade to put a couple grit classifiers in there. This is not going to be cheap, and the engineering is going to have to be, oh, really good to get that to work. Our cake, we've been having issues with cake. We almost lost our place at the MDC. You no longer go out and bid and solicit bids to get rid of your waste. You're lucky to have a spot. They're down to one-year renewal contracts, and this, and our product has to be tight. The thicker we get it, the less we have to truck. It's cheaper for us that way, but if we go over 25%, they'll reject us in solids. So, it's getting really tricky. If we have, we had one number that came back in our laboratory data. It was a high hit. It was an unusual number. I forget what the parameter was, but I had to provide them with five years' worth of data to prove to them that was an anomaly so they wouldn't throw us out of the MDC. Michael and I, our business manager, looked around. We went over 100, 200-mile radius. We couldn't find anybody else that would take our cake if this deal fell through. We were lucky, we're in for another year. Even the sludge byproducts has become a problem. Maine is shutting down land application this month. So, there's a lot of treatment facilities in New England scrambling. There's no capacity in any incinerators around. So, these are just some problems we've been working through. On the good side, the new camera trucks coming this month. We already scheduled training, and as soon as the training's complete, we're actually taking it up to Meadowlark because we're doing a lot of work up on Meadowlark, getting ready for the roads project. We found that, we TV'd the entire system, and we found a lot of deficiencies. We're replacing some broken manholes. We have to replace some broken sewer main. A lot of it, we're going to be able to line to save the town some money. But now, what we need to do is we need to go back, and I don't know if you're familiar with that area, but it's a very dense area. There's a lot of laterals there that we own. Some of them are orange burg. The very first, I think it was here a month, when we had a sinkhole up on actual Meadowlark Drive itself I had to go take care of. It turned out it was one of those orange burg pipes. They were put in the 50s, 60s, 70s. It's basically a cardboard pipe conveying water. They don't last. We own that up to the property line. So, at the end of this month, I hope to have our brand-new camera crew, not crew, camera truck with a trained crew where we can actually go up and not just inspect the lines, we're actually going to be able to shoot the camera up into the laterals to inspect our portion as well. That way, we can go back and fix any broken laterals that we may find before we put the new roads in. That way, we don't have to dig them up like a year later because we didn't see something. And so, let's see what else. Routine maintenance, we're swapping gravity thickeners. That's a big job. We have to do a major confined space. The gravity thickeners is where we pump all the waste product, thicken it up before it goes to our sludge presses, and it's all inside. So, it's a huge tank. It's like a giant clarifier. We'll be putting guys in there. And, excuse me, we have to check every nut and bolt. These pieces of equipment run 24 hours a day for a year at a time before we take them down, and things come loose, things break. We're also swapping the primary clarifiers. I can go on, but I don't know how much you folks want to hear. I'm a little passionate about it. So, that's where we're at with some of that stuff. And of course, we have the projects that we're working on with Grapebrook. We hope to go out to bid very shortly. We'll be picking dates within the next couple of weeks and writing the scope for Sparkle Street replacement. Any questions?
Counselor Finger.
Todd, Donald, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
So, I'm not sure everybody understood what grit is when it comes into transportation. If you don't, maybe, you know, we can explain that a little bit to them.
Certainly, yeah. We have, you guys put, we just put in a brand-new Headworks building. It used to be outside. The Headworks building's designed for one purpose. People have a problem understanding on how to use a toilet, so they flush a lot of garbage down it. We have two primary sources of treatment. Grit is primarily sand from failed portions of collection system. You're repotting your spider plant and all that dirt. Well, it comes to us. Eggshells, broken glass, things of that nature, anything heavy that can settle out is considered grit. There's going to be screws, batteries, kids' toys, you name it. It's all mixed in there. Then, the other portion is the screenings. We're good on the screenings because the upgrade actually, that would have been a special waste for us. But we purchased part of the device to, in order for us to make it municipal out of the special waste category, it had to be bagged. So, we purchased those. The equipment hasn't arrived yet because everything's on back order. And my staff and I went out and we MacGyvered a setup so we can actually turn that waste. And the screenings, that would be plastic wrappers, candy wrappers, tampon applicators, condoms, cigarette butts, all the stuff that floats comes out and that portion of it. So, that's also a special waste, but we're lucky because we're now actually putting that out with the household trash instead of taking that to Manchester as well. Our next scheduled cleaning of grit is going to be this spring. We could have anywhere between 20 to 40 yards of this product we're going to have to get out of here. If we don't get it out, it overloads the system. It'll leave our grit channel, go into our primary clarifiers, where it'll destroy all our pumps and equipment. Our pumps are made out of rubber diaphragms, and that material would just destroy it. So, we have to stay on top of it. We like to clean it in the spring and the fall because of the odors. It's a very odorous job. It doesn't smell pretty to take this stuff out, as you probably know firsthand.
Another question I got, you said you mentioned a town in Mass.
Yes.
Is that, can you give us a name of that, and are we going to?
I don't. It's a secret. I had to.
Okay. So, I guess I can ask you, are we going to haul it?
I had to go through a contractor. I was.
No, it's good. You can stop right there, my friend. I appreciate that. The cake, I know that we dry it out a lot better than Hartford does, MDC.
Yes.
There's no doubt about it. So, unfortunate thing is we dry it out, let's say, at a 70% ratio, and we bring it down to them. They put it back in their domain systems, and they try to draw it out, dry it out to , and they got. Have you thought, I'm sure you have, and again, you are excellent, and I like you a lot, but hauling it by liquid instead of cake?
Well, liquid, then you're hauling the weight of water. Right now, we're hauling out 22 ton of dry product a day at only, at approximately 24% to 25% solids. So, the drier it is, the less water you're hauling, and water can be very expensive to haul.
Yeah, definitely. Because I know years ago, we were looking at that from hauling it from that tank as liquid, and also having the Class A license, that's a tough thing, too, so.
The product, we're able to, with the gravity thickeners, to get it up to about 3% solid. So, you could imagine how many trucks it would take a day to haul a liquid product. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good, thank you. Cindy?
Counselor Mangini.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For all your hard work and for delivering a wonderful presentation. You've answered the question that I actually dug, brought forward on the special waste. My concern, my big concern would be, the state is not helpful, or they're washing their hands from this issue?
Pretty much, yes, because there is technology. We can put in machines that can clean this product and turn it into a municipal waste, but it's a huge expense.
So, if that's the case, have we applied for grant funding? Are we looking for means to help our town get through that process? Because this is obviously extremely important.
Not formally. We were only hit with a notice a couple of months ago, so we've been in panic scrambling mode at this point in time while we're trying to get everything put together.
We were, all the cities and towns that brought their stuff to Manchester, along with the state, were notified at the same time. It wasn't, so it was just a few months ago, and we were all, it was, okay, everybody got the notice, and we're closed. Have a nice day. Bye.
So, the state has shut the door on us, essentially?
It wasn't the state that shut the plant down. It's Manchester made the decision to not operate it anymore.
So, and you said you're working through the process. There are other avenues to explore?
Oh, yes, definitely. There's plenty of avenues, but they all take time. An upgrade would take a long time. We'd have to go to design, build, and it's not going to be an easy design if we choose to go that route.
And you'll keep us informed as you go along? Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Counselor Nelson?
If Manchester is the only town that's been taking it, we're going to be forced to deal with this sooner than later. Shouldn't we get out in front of it? I understand, like you said, it's going to take a lot of time to do this, but if every other town in Connecticut's going to be doing the same thing with supply and demand right now, I mean, maybe we should really look at starting this and getting this project going before we can't find a place to get rid of it.
I do not disagree. The town of Vernon is doing an upgrade right now. They actually shut their upgrade down because of this notification, and they are doing a very big change order while they put in this equipment so they can get out of this problem. This happened to 110 facilities simultaneously this year. It's been out there for 10, 20 years, and I haven't seen one single facility attempt to get ahead of it, I'm afraid. So, government, we tend to be reactive.
Right, and I want to be proactive because otherwise, it ends up costing us, and then I could see it now. We're going to start getting fined because we can't get rid of it, because we can't get the equipment because it's backordered, because there's 50 towns in front of us waiting for it. So, I mean, I would be interested in seeing, you know, rough numbers of what this is going to cost the town, and I'm just speaking for myself, of course. But, next is the Waymouth Road Pump Station. We had a conversation about that, and we all know the issues that are going on out there, but it was mentioned that every time it rains, that pump station runs three, four days in a row. Well, that's a serious problem because this town has spent millions trying to keep drainage and groundwater out of the sewer system so we're not paying to treat it. Now, that pump station is only for Pheasant Hill?
No.
No. So, with the new camera equipment, will we be able to look in the sewer lines and find out where this groundwater is coming from and try to eliminate it?
Possibly, yes. We may be able to locate it.
You know, I mean, a big problem is people tying their sump pumps, you know, into the city sewer. I do know some unscrupulous builders will tie their footing drains into the sewer, and nobody knows it. But with a camera, I mean, shut the water off to the house, and if there's still water coming out of the house, we know there's a problem.
Correct.
So, you know, that would cut down drastically on that pump station's stress that it's under. And then, I appreciate Ellen, everything she's done to work with the gentleman on Waymouth Road, but he had a conversation with you, Todd, and you said it was going to be extensive engineering and stuff like that to design this system. And I personally feel that the town is partially responsible for this. We can't supply him with a sewer, that he ran the sewer main in front of his property and everything. He's willing to take on the expense of the solution we talked about, putting a storage tank in, pumping only at 2 o'clock in the morning when the pump station's, he's willing to pay for all of that. But to create a whole design of this system, he wants to go to the company, say, "Look, I have an occupancy of 70 people. This is the pump he needs. Submit it to you," and, you know, go forward with it.
It's not that simple. It's kind of a complicated hydraulics issue. We have a can lift station currently with 48 homes on it, and it's only pumping 50 gallons a minute. I mean, all it's going to take is several people flushing toilets or in a shower, and then you have an event with 70 people at it, food trucks, music, beer.
Yeah, but if he's only pumping at 2 o'clock in the morning?
Correct. We had the discussion, yes.
Right. So, that would eliminate?
That was one of my suggestions, that perhaps he can design a system that will work with our facility and only pump, it'll be an equalization basin. There's three options. You could do an equalization basin. We also discussed an engineered septic system like I have in my backyard where it pumps up to a leaching field I had to put in, or just a plain old holding tank. When a light comes on, you have to call a vac truck to come and suck it out.
Right.
So, those are the three options without replacing the lift station.
And he's willing to do the storage tank on a timer, 500 gallons. A toilet's 1.3 gallons, 70 people. His brewery is a 10-gallon washout, so even if he did two runs a day, that's 20 gallons and 70 occupancy only on the weekend. It's only pumping at 2 o'clock in the morning, so it really shouldn't affect the pump station. He's willing to do all of that and work with us, you know, to try to postpone the problem because the problem at that pump station has to get fixed and addressed, or at least we got to address the groundwater that keeps, you know, inundating the system. I don't know how many other pump stations, but it's a lot of money to treat groundwater, and there's no need for it. So, I'm glad to hear about the camera truck, and hopefully, that can pay for itself in the future. But I'm just looking at, you know, working with this gentleman, the town working with him, instead of reinventing the wheel just to put this 500-gallon pump system in.
The other thing, too, Counselor, is that he wanted to reuse one of the lines that he has now. So, we need, that's why we were suggesting using an engineer to make sure that when that's going on, he has the proper safeguards that it's not going to go back on his, back into his home.
Okay.
Or the next person up. So, that's, as I said, it's a little more complicated than just having that tank and just pumping upstream because, again, he wants to reuse what he has instead of digging a new line from that home, Westerly to that manhole, which is, you know, that's a completely different situation. That's straightforward. Reusing the line that he has currently existing for his personal home and for a lot of that other stuff is not easy fix. Because it's a fine, it's a certain, only a certain-sized pipe, finite amount of liquid can go through that, and there has to be safeguards on the other side to make sure, again, we don't, he doesn't get backed up in his house if something failed or if it overtook the system there.
Or the brewery doesn't get backed up from his house. So, it's a forced main, right?
Either one, right. So, that's where the tricky part of that engineering equation comes from. If it was a separate line, a separate animal, it's, that's straightforward.
Beautiful.
Reusing the line, totally different set of rules and ballgame for engineering and hydraulics.
Thank you. Thank you for clarification.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I should also say thank you, Mr. Mathiessen, for coming. Every time you come and speak in front of the council, it's quite elucidating. Not that you aren't as well, Mr. Nunes, but as I understand this grit issue, so there are really three options. One is build a new cleaning plant for multimillion-dollar figure. I would also like to know what that might be because there are maybe a limited number of options. Option two is to continue to rely on this facility in Massachusetts and continue cleaning on our side to some extent. What other infrastructure is needed in town for that option two to really work, provided that the plant in Massachusetts continues to accept our waste?
If they continue to accept, and I'm not sure how this is going to go down because I wasn't able to secure this between us and the landfill. I was able to get this offer from one of the companies that used to clean the grit channels for us, and I called them all, actually, to see what they could come up with because they've been scrambling trying to find people. So, this particular company, it's ESI Environmental Solutions Service, thank you, South Windsor. They are the ones that secured this deal. So, it's a one-year deal, and it comes with a bunch of stipulations. Paint filter test, which means it can't have one drop of water in it. If you take the sample and you stick it in like a coffee filter, that's actually a test, so it has to be that dry. When we take it out of there, it's not that dry. It takes a long time. It's really hard for us. Well, we have to go out there and flip that product like two, three times with our Bobcat on the washdown pad. Then, if it rains, we start all over again, and it's something. I don't, I don't know. We don't have a lot of options at the moment. We're still in the exploratory phase of what we can do, and I've been looking at equipment and starting to crunch numbers and how much it would cost for us to treat it here. I don't anticipate that to be cheap. It would actually be another building we'd have to put up for this equipment, if we even have the footprint to be able to do so. The entire grit channels would have to be jackhammered out and pitched so you could actually get it to go into a pump to get it into, so we can actually pump it up to the equipment that would do the cleaning. So, currently, we do not have infrastructure for this type of equipment. It would take a lot of engineering, I think, and some creative thinking to make it work on our end.
Thank you. And I guess the third option is maybe the state reclassifies this stuff, but that's...
That would be wonderful.
Yeah. How likely is it that there might be some other facility that would take this stuff? It sounds like you looked all over Massachusetts.
Manchester's been the only facility that we've been using for more than 15 years now. They were the only ones left in the state, and, yeah, I don't have an answer.
Thank you.
Yeah, when we were first looking at that, we were calling all of our environmental companies that we normally deal with, and they all had the same response. They're all trying to find stuff, and they're all going nowhere quick. And that's, again, for ESI to actually have a connection up in Massachusetts, that was a home run. I mean, even just that one little foot in the door was a home run compared to all the bad news we were getting from all of our other environmental consultants that there's just nowhere to bring this stuff right now.
And the last question I have, so you described this as a trial basis. Could you talk a little bit more about that?
ESI told us that the landfill was going to take it, but this is only a trial basis, and they were not going to promise any more than one year. The material is very odorous, very odorous. So, there, that's why I was told Manchester has decided that due to numerous complaints, we're just done taking it.
Well, thank you. I know it's no easy, I mean, no easy answers here, but it's helpful to at least know that this problem exists and try to figure out a solution. Thank you.
Counselor Ludwig?
Welcome, gentlemen. So, curious, any idea what some of these other towns are doing now that they can't bring, just what are they?
Well, the one town I mentioned, they're changing their upgrade to include this equipment.
Is there a way, if it's not us, where we can join some of these towns to build, help them with an upgrade? And is there federal money to tap into?
Not that I'm aware of at the moment.
No.
There's the listserv that, you know, the T2 Center has it for, you know, for the WPCF side of things, and everybody's, what do we do?
Not that I'm aware of at the moment.
No.
There's a, the listserv that, you know, the T2 Center has it for, you know, for the WPCF side of it, things, and everybody's, what do we do? What do we do? And there's, there's nothing.
Right.
Yeah.
I receive emails from, I received emails, it was an email chain, when 110 wastewater treatment facilities in Connecticut, and I shared it with Donald. It's basically panic. Nobody knows what to do. Everybody's, it's fending for themselves at the moment.
Unrelated question, Donald. Great Brook, where is Great Brook?
Behind the Legion.
Okay, that's, sorry.
Down in the Legion.
Thank you. So, other than the 2-point million for ARPA, how much is the Great Brook project going to cost? And I think you mentioned Sparkle as well.
Yeah, it's going to be, Great Brook's going to be 2.5, 3, and, you know, Sparkle's going to be 2, 2.5, so.
Does it, do we have to do this over, assuming multiple years, or? I just care, I mean, because if, it doesn't have to go to RFRM to finish this project, or do we, can we do, are we doing it over multiple years?
We do have, we have been putting away money for the, in the WPCF capital side for, you know, like pump station upgrades. We've been putting away like $500,000 a year for, for many years now. So we do have almost, we have 1.928 million in that right now. So we do have money from that to back to, if we're running low, or if we need to backfeed with that, we have, we have that as a backup.
Okay. So it's just those two, but we have, we have how many pump stations? Six, 16, or 16, right?
16.
How, what condition are those other? 14.
They all have to be replaced.
At about, about a million, million and a pop.
Some of them are way past their life expectancy. We just completed a study. We had Wright Pierce come in and do a lift station analysis for us. We have some work to do.
Some of the stations, like, again, everybody knows, down on South River Street, I mean, that's, that's a monster station. Great Brook is a monster. But the other ones, like on Enfield Terrace, it's a little, it's only for Enfield Terrace, it's this very small one, and it's, they're, they range in size, they range in, in style. Some of them are so, the old, can't, you know, the, some that are just, just don't exist anymore, we have to, they're just so old, and some of them are, again, there's all varieties in states of repair and disrepair and functionality, but they're all working right now, and all the generators are working, everything's working. So we're just trying to be proactive.
And knock on wood, the berm is almost done?
Dead. Hopefully, two weeks will start, hopefully.
That's really, that's really good news.
Yep.
Yep. Well, I want to, I want to thank you, and I'm sure that with these 16 pump stations that we have, we, you know, the maintenance plan that you have in, in place, you know, every couple of years, or, you know, you know, we will have to, you know, address, you know, what pumps are going to be, you know, needed moving forward. So, so we have the Sparkle area. Can you just expand upon that just a little bit? I know that this project there is approximately between 2 and 2.5 million dollars. Okay? So that's another big huge, the Sparkle area pump.
Sparkle's a very old lift station. It uses, it's a pot station. It uses antiquated technology. Can't, we can't even buy replacement parts for it anymore. We have to manufacture stuff at machine shops or internally as we fix it. Most of the station is underground, and it's going to be, yeah, it's, it's a big project. It's not an easy one to fix. It's pretty deep, too. It's not as deep as some of ours, but we have, we have one lift station. I can't remember the name of it. It's, it's 60 feet below ground.
Wow.
We do a lot of confined space work in our department on a weekly basis.
Okay. Well, well, thank you very much. And the last thing I just want to mention is the, the odor control building. Does that have to be constructed? Is that already constructed? Because you said that you wanted to start dry gridding in the springtime.
Yeah. What I'd like to do is, we, I've talked over with my staff, and we think we can do this. There's an odor control line that draws air from the headworks building that's close to where the washdown pad is located. What I'd like to do is put a T in it, tap off it, and bring it over, and then put up a temporary hoop house for the year. So when we do put it in there, we have some kind of odor control going on, so we're not getting in trouble for, for excessive odors.
Okay. So that would be a temporary unit that...
Correct. It's all temporary.
So it wouldn't be a permanent structure?
No, not permanent. No, we will, we will bolt it to the washdown pad so a windstorm doesn't take it away, of course, but it would be temporary.
Okay.
And we'll do, we're going to do it all in-house.
Great. Well, thank, thank you very much. Anybody else have any other questions? Well, thank you. Greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Todd and Donald.
All right. And just one more thing, just so you know, the things that we find in, that come through, I just want to leave you with, not too long ago, we pulled out a George Costanza puffy coat from the, from the Muffin Monster. Yeah, it was a full North Face puffy coat, so, full, full coat. Just, just throw that out there. Just think about that one.
Well, well, thank you very much. Moving on to item four, the resolution to approve the change in use for 11 Pearl Street from commercial to residential effective the next WPC billing cycle. And the resolution states, whereas 11 Pearl Street was the Thompsonville Fire District Firehouse for several years, and whereas the Thompsonville Fire District Firehouse is now located at 35 North Main Street, and whereas the water line surfacing 11 Pearl Street has a 2-inch meter, which has a base quarterly charge of $312 per the town sewer service fee schedule for fiscal year 2223, and whereas Patrick and Jeanette Talarida purchased 11 Pearl Street in July 2021 and have converted the building into a single-family residence, and whereas pursuant to the Town of Enfield Sewer Usage Adjustment Policy, subsection D, Mr. and Mrs. Talarida have requested that the base quarterly charge be adjusted to reflect the rate for a 5-inch meter, which size is the typical size for a single-family residences. Now, there be resolved that the base quarterly charge as set forth in the sewer use fee schedule shall be adjusted to reflect the rate for a 5-inch meter for 11 Pearl Street. Be further resolved that the adjustment shall commence as the date of this resolution and shall be effective only for the period that 11 Pearl Street is used primarily as a single-family residence.
So moved.
Counselor Mangini, and a second by Deputy Mayor Cicola. Discussion. Counselor Nelson.
So my first issue with this is we're not planning and zoning. We don't have the ability to change this building from commercial to residential. If they would like, they can go get a change, a zone change, and then at that point, they can come back and put a 5/8s meter on the building, and like all the residential houses do, because I know if I put a 2-inch main on my residential house or a 2-inch meter, I'm going to be charged accordingly. Doesn't matter whether I'm residential or commercial. Just as they can take the 2-inch meter out and bolt in a 5/8s meter, they don't have to change any plumbing in the building, all it will do is lessen the flow going into the building. It's not going to lessen the pressure or anything like that. I also know when they came to us at planning and zoning, they had stated how they're going to be, I don't know if it was a better breakfast, but they're going to be having people come and rent it for nights. So it's not a residential property. And then in the future, they're looking to do some commercial business here. So, like I said, we don't have the ability to change it from commercial to residential. Planning and zoning does. And if they want to do that, have at it. Then come back to us. I'd be all in favor of them reducing the meter, and they can pay the regular meter fee. But how do you take a commercial building that you bought, a commercial building, and then come to the town and expect us to drop the fee when you don't want to drop to a residential status? I'm all set. Thank you.
Counselor Mangini.
I respectfully disagree with Councilman Nelson in the sense that although this building is zoned commercial, the Talaridas did purchase the property with the intent of using it as a residence and in the future, doing a mixed use. And our resolution clearly states that the adjustment shall commence as the date of this resolution and be effective only for the period that 11 Pearl Street is used primarily as a single-family residence, which essentially means that once the commercial piece fits in, then it will go back to a change. So I fully support this resolution. Thank you.
Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think this suggestion really requires a zone change. I mean, we are meeting here, you know, within our capacity as the WPCA. I think this is a matter of equity as well as incentivizing development of this property. We have plenty of buildings in Thompsonville which have historic uses, but we want revitalized, we want a thriving economy down there. And I think this one, being a former firehouse, maybe turning into a bar restaurant makes a lot of sense. I think this small change will incentivize that. But, you know, if they don't follow through with that, it's not, we're not going to keep this forever. So I think it's fair on both sides. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Finger.
No, go ahead. No, Doug, go first.
All right. So I, I agree in respect with everybody else, with Counselor Nelson. This is a commercial building. There's no doubt about it. It's already labeled that. It is what it is. They chose to move in, and I love the Talaridas. They know that. I supported Pat when he was mayor, when they ran, when he had the majority here on his, on his dais. And I will always support him and his wife, but in the case, you have to be fair to everybody. And just because he is a, an excellent person, he's a well-known person, and his family's well-known, his mom, everybody did a great job here in Enfield, I don't want this to turn into a political issue. And it is, in my opinion. And I think that we should keep it as is, and I agree with Counselor Nelson saying that, this needs to go before planning and zoning. Now, if they chose to change it, let them do it. Now, again, I have a lot of respect for the Talaridas. I will know that one of my neighbors is a Talarida, and I will say that we need to keep things the way that they are, because if this was anybody different, all of us would be saying, go to planning and zoning. We have an ex-commissioner of planning and zoning on our board, Counselor Nelson, he knows what the rules are, he knows how it goes. None of us up here knows how to do what he did. He's got the experience. I think we need to listen to him, and let's do things right. And rightfully, again, not showing any disrespect to anybody, and I don't know how the rest of us feel here on this whole dais, but I know we're all trying to support somebody who's very important to this town, and I fully understand that, but we have to make it right for everybody in this town, the way that things are. If we're going to tell other people things go to planning and zoning, and he says, as ex-commissioner, this needs to go planning and zoning, I believe, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Pizner.
I can appreciate the fact that he was trying to take this building and revitalize Thompsonville and is, as a bar, restaurant. That's what I originally thought that was going in there, and I respect that, and I'm, I'm grateful he wants to be part of the revitalization. And the fact that he's living above it, that's an added bonus. But he bought a building that was a commercial building. We are setting a precedent if we let this go through. So the next person that comes in and buys a building, they're going to come before us and say, we want the same thing. He can make this into a residential by just simply changing the meter size, and then there's no question about it. It's a plumbing issue. He goes in, he changes the meter size, it now flows like a residential. Then he comes back when he, if or when he ever puts his brewery or restaurant in, and then puts in the, the meter he needs. He can put in two separate meters, a meter for residential, a meter for the business. I don't want to set a precedent moving forward with the revitalization of Thompsonville that we have people coming before us constantly saying, well, you know, we bought a commercial building, but we're going to live upstairs, and so. I'm against setting the precedent. So I will have to vote against this, as I did before.
Counselor Santinella.
Yeah, thank you. I, I am supporting this. I, I think this is a temporary fix for him during this transition period, and I think it's a reasonable request. I want to reiterate what Counselor Hopkins said. We are sitting here as the planning and, the Water Pollution Control Authority, not as the council or, or PNC, and I think that it is well within our right to make this change. And I don't think that this is particularly special treatment. I think it's an unusual circumstance that requires a special action more than special treatment. And if there are other people who have a similar circumstance and want to come and ask for the same accommodation, we can certainly grant that to them. So I am going to support this. I think that the bigger, the bigger picture, the work that's being done there and the implications to a neighborhood, which is important to us, overweighs the nuances of sort of the extenuating circumstances. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, I, I welcome anybody who has a great idea for developing Thompsonville to come in front of the council. I think many of us up here are very interested in its continued development, and we will absolutely make some changes, remove some of the, the red tape that prevents that. You know, development in Thompsonville is like a small flame right now. We really want to, we really want to protect it, we want to foster it so that we can have a booming center of town again. I think that's really, you know, the takeaway here. I think this is an easy thing to do, and I think we need to continue doing things like this because it's fair, equitable, and helps us really revitalize that part of town.
Thank you. Counselor Finger, and then my turn.
I got you. So mine's just quick.
I want to correct my statements. I'm not, I should have said Commissioner Nelson instead of Counselor Nelson on my statements. So if we can make that change in a minutes, please, I very much appreciate that because we are, again, no, just want to make it correct for everybody, and I still think that we should not do it at this time. Thank you.
I'm going to be supportive of this, regardless of thinking that it's a, a political ploy. I, I'm looking at the revitalization of Thompsonville. He's taken an old firehouse, and he did make it into a residence with the idea of commercial use, whether it's a, a pub, you know, brewery, but that's somewhere, somewhere down the road. This topic is just something that hasn't just been brought up this year. This topic has been brought up since he's moved in. I've had conversations with him. This is something that has been ignored by WPC. It's been ignored for, for quite some time. This is a temporary fix for somebody who's doing something good for our town. And he's made a commitment, he's made a commitment to a residence, he's made a commitment to helping down in this particular area. I'm supportive of this. You know, unfortunately, you know, the firehouse has a, a 4-inch meter, and it's not his fault that it's there. And this is a temporary fix for him. And if somewhere down the road that the single residence turns into a pub, then the rate would, would go back to what it is. But I am in favor of this, and we will move forward with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just for the edification of the council, and a reminder that at the July 5th meeting, you voted with a resolution to amend the WPCA dispute process. Town Code 86-204, subsection C, allows you, as the Water Pollution Control Authority, to amend the dispute resolution process based on the town manager's recommendation. So when you did that, you amended the sewer usage adjustment policy and added a new section, section D, change in use. If a property is converted, converted from a non-residential use to a primary, single-family residential use, the base quarterly charge may be adjusted to reflect the residential use. So you are within your powers as WPCA to take this action. Counselor Nelson is correct that if this was a planning and zoning matter, there would be a change of use. We are not there yet, and the plans for commercial use in the future, nothing has been solidified as far as I'm concerned. But my recommendation in order to make the policy change in July was based on the fact that we have to do everything in our power to enable appropriate redevelopment in the Thompsonville area. That is why we are working with Mr. Salas to redo all of the lines in part of his site plan application. It's why we are invested in the Strand in Le Mania. And anybody else that comes through as well, we will take it on a case-by-case basis. It's a very difficult location, based on the urban renewal that happened earlier, and so you're probably going to see a lot more very unique-type situations as people come forward. In fact, Mark's Restaurant was one that you tackled earlier in the spring because they were non-conforming in terms of the public works barrel policy. So I've always felt that you tackle them as they come with appropriate policy. You have the policy in place based on the July 5th resolution that you adopted.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sheila, roll call, please.
I'm sorry. One question. Excuse me. I'm sorry. Question. Just want to question. She said...
Counselor Ludwig.
Just curious, has any money been spent on a property? TIF money or any, I know there was grants that were, what happened in July? I missed the meeting, but wasn't there some money that we were, we state money that could be used for that building in a commercial sense, I thought? Is that correct, or is it a different building?
Which building, Counsel Ludwig?
11 Pearl Street.
I would have to look that up. I don't recall anything. I don't work.
I thought there was a special meeting in July where the council voted for state money, part of the, some development money, and that was one of the properties in mind.
Oh.
And it is zoned commercial. I think that's Counselor, Commissioners Nelson's point. Again, so whether they're using it as a single family, it's zoned commercial. I mean, that's what it's zoned.
I think that you might be referencing the community investment fund grant application. So we were actually notified late on Friday that we did not receive that grant. The only people who received that grant were the large cities. So we are going to be pushing our application forward to the next round.
So is that property being pushed for a grant for business development?
It was not called out specifically, but it was an example that we used in our application of someone who would be eligible for participation in that grant process.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sheila, roll call.
Vice Chair Sikala.
Four.
Chairman Crisati.
Four.
Commissioner Despard.
Four.
Commissioner Finger.
Against.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Four.
Commissioner Ludwig.
Against.
Commissioner Mangini.
Four.
Commissioner Nelson.
Against.
Commissioner Pisner.
Against.
Commissioner Antonella.
Four.
And Commissioner Ungary.
Against.
That is six in favor, five against, no abstentions.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Nelson and Commissioner Sikala. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Welcome to the Enfield Town Council regular meeting, Monday, October 3. It is now 7:13. We will start tonight's meeting with the prayer from Counselor Ungary.
Lord, give us wisdom on how best to represent our community. We pray that your compassionate wisdom and justice-making be our guide for daily living. Help us to lead in a manner that reflects your love. Help all our officials and staff, who are taxed with representing the community, to seek wise counsel and to make sound decisions to lead our community forward. Give us joy in the work that lies before us and camaraderie to complete our tasks at hand, and we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
At this time, I'd like to call up Troop 108 and Anthony Rosado to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Would you like to come forward, please?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. In a few minutes, we will be recognizing Anthony Rosado, and we'll congratulate you in a few minutes on your Eagle Scout Court of Honor. Sheila, roll call.
Counselor Ungary.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Here.
Mayor Crisati.
Here.
Counselor Despard.
Here.
Counselor Finger.
Here.
Counselor Hopkins.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mangini.
Here.
Counselor Nelson.
Here.
Counselor Pisner.
Here.
Counselor Antonella.
Here.
Eleven members present and unabsent.
The fire evacuation announcement. In the event of a fire, there are exits in the back of the chambers, and to my left and to the audience's right, exit through the doors and go downstairs into the respective parking lots. Item number five, minutes of preceding meetings. First of all, the regular meeting, August 29. Is there a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Counselor, Deputy Mayor Sikala, and a second from Counselor Mangini. Does anybody have any changes or corrections?
Those minutes aren't in our packet. They were denied the last meeting, so I didn't realize we were going to be voting on minutes that aren't in our packet. They did not pass the last meeting.
Right, so we are going to pass them right now.
Will you be vote on when you vote?
Well, that's what we're going to do. We're going to vote, okay?
Have the changes been made to them?
I do not have any changes in front of me.
So just as a point of order, is this discussion for the motion that's just been made?
No, this discussion right now is for the approval of the minutes. Okay, by show of hands, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, and against? One, two, three, four, and an abstention. Okay, so there are six in favor, four opposed, and one abstention. Do I have a motion to approve the special meeting minutes on September 19, 2022?
So moved.
Counselor Nelson, and a second, Counselor Mangini. Any corrections or changes to the minutes? By a show of hands, all in favor? Opposed? Abstention. Okay, 10 in favor, one abstention. Do I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from September 19?
So moved.
Deputy Mayor Sikala, and a second from Counselor Nelson. Any corrections or changes to the minutes? By a show of hands, all in favor? And opposed and abstentions. So we have 10 in favor, one abstention. Item number six, special guest, Eagle Scout, Court of Honor recognition, Anthony Rosado. I would like to ask Anthony Rosado to come forward. Anthony attained his Eagle Scout during COVID, so he was unable to have his traditional Court of Honor. So we acknowledge you tonight, Anthony, for the work well done. This is a significant achievement for you, considering only approximately 4% of the Scouts reach this level. Before I present your proclamation to you, I would like you to take a seat, turn on the microphone, and give us an overview of what you did for your Eagle Scout project. And welcome. Let's give them a round of applause.
Bob, can you have them list what every one of those badges are for, please?
Well, we might be here till 11 o'clock, Ken. Quite an accomplishment. We welcome you, and the floor is yours.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So at the American Legion, there was 20 picnic tables, which needed to be redone. So my troop was having their meetings there during COVID, and I looked at the tables, and I had an idea to like fix them and make them look like new again. So I raised money, collecting bottles and cans, and raised enough money to sand down and re-stain all 20 picnic tables, which took a few weeks to finish.
That's awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Anthony, in front of you, there's a red button. Could you hit that?
Yes.
Is it on?
Now it's off.
Okay. It was on? Could you just push the mic a little and?
Towards you.
Towards you? There you go.
And push the red button again.
Yeah, press, you were right. Yeah, you were good.
Give another pass.
There you go. All right. So, you know, I was first approached by Lynn McLean, the chair of the Boy Scout Association Troop 108, and she told me the story that, you know, during COVID, that you weren't recognized properly. And when she called me and said, you know, could you do something for Anthony? And I said, absolutely. And so here we are tonight. We are here to acknowledge, congratulate you on a job well done, and all of those badges and awards and everything that you have accomplished, my hat's off to you, because, you know, like I stated before, the statistics of somebody following through to become an Eagle Scout, the stats are not in people's favor. You have made that commitment. You should be proud of your accomplishments. It is something that you're going to be able to put on your college resume, and that people will take notice. All admissions will be taking notice of this award. So once again, I am going to stand and present this to you. I'm going to come around, and I'm going to read this to you.
Mayor, do you want us out there too also?
If you would like, that would be great. This is a proclamation honoring Eagle Scout Anthony Rosado of Troop 108. Whereas Anthony has progressed through the various levels of scouting to the status of Eagle Scout and has put forth a conscientious effort in earning 88 merit badges, and whereas Anthony has enjoyed 25 nights of camping, 28 miles of hiking, and completed 58 hours of community service. And whereas Anthony was a recipient of the Emergency Preparedness Award, the Paul Bunyan Woodsman Award, and the World Conservation Award. And whereas Anthony has completed his Eagle Service Project, which consisted of refurbishing the picnic tables at the American Legion in Enfield. Now therefore, I, Robert Crisati, the mayor of the town of Enfield, on behalf of the Town Council, the Town Administration, and the entire community, do hereby extend our congratulations to you, Anthony Rosado, in recognition of attaining Scoutist's highest and most distinguished honor, the rank of Eagle Scout. And I congratulate you, young man.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for being honored. You're going to go and shake everybody's hand, that would be great, okay? Any person wishing to speak in front of the council, please state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes the first round, three minutes the second round, which would give us a total of one hour. And please, when you come up, please refrain from any personalities, and I expect respectful behavior from everybody, and that would be greatly appreciated. Okay? Yep? Give the glasses.
Thank you. It's on. I'm Christina Lang. I live at 90 South Road in Enfield. My name's Chris Lang. I'm a core group member of Showing Up for Racial Justice, Enfield Chapter. The other members of Enfield's SURGE leadership team and community supporters are in the room tonight. Thank you. Enfield SURGE is an affiliate of SURGE National, which has over 200 chapters across the country. SURGE and our community partners are working to help improve racial inclusion and representation in Enfield. The intent of the DEI committee proposal, which is listed under item J on your agenda, is not to call out shortcomings in Enfield. The intent of the DEI Committee proposal, which is listed under item J on your agenda, is not to call out shortcomings or highlight the negative. It is to carry this work to the next level in the form of a true community partnership. In preparation, Enfield SURGE consulted with Enfield residents and other community justice organizations such as Power Up Connecticut, Manchester, Ujima, BLM 860, and DEI committees from neighboring towns. We recognize that Enfield has made strides in this area with the creation of the Parent Equity Team, and most recently inviting an anti-racism partner to hold a community conversation. We appreciate your consideration of this proposal and look forward to next steps. The proposal before you tonight in your packets is for a town committee dedicated to diversity, equity, and inclusion. This proposal grew naturally out of years of discussion about feeling heard and represented. Work on this DEI Committee proposal was accelerated by the recent racist incident in which a high schooler was targeted, as well as by thoughts and feelings that flow from the community conversation event that followed on August 23rd. The overall goal of the DEI Committee is to create a platform for holding conversations about diversity in-town policies and government. Thoughtful recommendations coming out of these discussions will then be brought to the Town Council as updates and reports. There are conversations happening in town every day that could help make Enfield more inclusive and ensure that everyone, regardless of race, religion, sexuality, or other characteristics, feels welcome and respected. This committee would bring stakeholders together to make sure these valuable thoughts and suggestions make their way to the proper venue yourselves, in a way that is efficient, well-researched, potentially turned into legislation if you so choose. Let's give you an example arising out of a recent community conversation event. At the event, one local woman noted her experience as a black student in Enfield's school system. She recalled that all the teachers she had in Enfield were kind to her, but they always treated her differently than her white peers. She wondered. It might have been because they just didn't know how to relate to her, not by choice, but by virtue of having a different cultural background. She concluded by saying she hopes that Enfield's teachers today are more representative of its student body. Following through on this example, the DEI Committee could explore whether proportional representation numbers exist in our schools. It could hear stories of other former students and current teachers and learn what other community schools do. The committee would then report its findings to the council with potential suggestions. Again, this committee could discuss and research any relevant topic, from making sure Enfield history is memorialized, to town cultural festivals and events. Was that a sign that my time is up? Oh, okay.
We'll let you know. You have 40 seconds left.
Okay. I'm nearly done. I just want to tell you that SURGE does believe a DEI Town Committee will add a lot of value to Enfield. Our community is full of people from different walks of life, and that diversity is our strength and the way to achieve our potential is to make everyone feel included. Thanks for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Zach Zenoni, 6 Howard Street, Enfield, Connecticut. I would also like to speak today about the DEI proposal that is being discussed. And I think one of the important things to note is while there was a multitude of culminating issues that has pushed for us to consider this, I think we can all likely agree that the boiling point was the racial incident that we saw on Haynes Street. And that was a public school student. So I have a few things I wanted to note about that, and my concern is why our Board of Education was not included in these discussions. In my opinion, I think our schools serve as the strongest and most diverse parts of our community, and they are truly the foundation to combat inequity and to combat racism in our schools. I think those who are educators would know that most prejudices actually start to form at adolescence, so wondering why our schools would not be in a partnership about this is concerning to me. And I understand that there is a liaison to the educational equity individual, Ms. Cox Blackwell, and I will note that, but a liaison is not a partnership. And I think it's unfortunate to hear that the Board of Education, who there was prior discussion about including them in a joint committee, was not even informed that this would be on the agenda until after it was already placed on the agenda. And Ms. Cox Blackwell is an amazing woman. She was my dean of students for three years, and I know her quite well. But those who have already met with the superintendent and with Ms. Cox Blackwell would know that she would state that she has a lot on her plate, and that a DEI Committee, while important, if it was partnered with our schools, could complement the work that she's doing because she has extensive time constraints. And in my opinion, I also view that our schools and our educators and our students are just, they're really the foundation of this town. And if we're talking about creating a committee and ensuring that when it was created engages a significant members of our community, our schools should have been a part of that conversation. Also, I wanted to note that under the definition of diversity, an example was provided, and it was differing political perspectives. You call me an idiot, but I would say differing political perspectives could be the Republican Party. They might be the minority on this council. I have an understanding that these five members had no idea that this would be on the agenda tonight, prior to what is occurring today. So I think that's unfortunate, because everyone should have been included in this conversation. And I do want to note this, on this, in that I'm an educator, and I believe in these issues. I am glad this committee is moving forward, and I truly believe that when it is passed, it can serve as an incubator for progress in this town. But I think to truly be the best Enfield that we can be, all 11 members of this council should have been included in this discussion. Our Board of Education should have been included in this discussion, even though they were on prior proposals and not on this one. And I think when we engage in conversations, even with people that we disagree with, I think that is truly an important aspect in the Town of Enfield. And I just feel that that didn't happen. It doesn't mean that I'm telling you to vote against it, but I think it's important to have a conversation about what we can do to ensure that we're including all members of this council and working with the Board of Ed, who was unequivocally, I know the majority of the Board of Ed was unequivocally in support of a committee of this style, so why they were not included, I do not know. Thank you.
Patrick Libido, 20 Cora Street, Enfield. If we're gonna talk about people who are not part of this discussion, I'd like to go back in time. My parents moved into Enfield in the late 1950s from Hartford. These new arrivals to Enfield were all white. The 1970 census tract covering Southwood Acres, some 5,500 people, was all white. I'm not gonna venture into why this was or the historical forces that created opportunities for some and not others, but I know that my parents and thousands of other young families who moved into Enfield weren't responsible for these inequities. My parents lived in a building behind an apartment building, a dingy apartment. They were just trying to get a better life for themselves, and I'm tremendously proud of them. But this history in Enfield still matters today. As historians note, we may live in the present, but it's on terms dictated by the past. The thousands of new arrivals to town created social networks that became political networks. Today, our single-family neighborhoods are still substantially white, and these social networks remain very important from which political power grows. But this also means that our political system isn't responding very well to the demographic changes in our town. What's the best way to explain this? I'll apply business concepts to Enfield. Businesses that prioritize inclusion and diversity, especially in their management teams, perform better financially. That's according to consulting organizations such as McKinsey and Gartner, and it's backed up by many other studies. Why are diverse firms performing financially better? People from different backgrounds and life experiences bring other methods and ideas to solving problems. Businesses also feel it's morally the right thing to do. Why do businesses have problems in creating diverse workforces? Similar to Enfield's political systems, companies rely heavily on referrals. Employees tend to refer people for jobs from their social networks. Recruiting and hiring managers and businesses do the same. Businesses have realized that this approach comes with performance negatives. Can Enfield benefit from a DEI Committee? It certainly can. Look at our financial performance. According to the Conservation Development Plan, Enfield's economy is declining. We're losing residents, our population is getting older, family sizes are smaller, and per capita spending is declining. All this is weakening our commercial district and our tax base. The site planning departments and big anchor stores are likely aware of this data. We need a robust, all-hands-on-deck response to create the town that people want to live in, especially young people. By forming this committee, we are sending the message that the town is adopting best business practices, and we want everyone to contribute. I just want to say, don't take the bait that this is somehow political, that somehow people are being excluded. Don't take this bait for once. Don't take it. There were only maybe five black Americans in my high school graduating class. I didn't realize how town, this town, how different this town was until I joined the Navy, and then all of a sudden was thrust into a radically different world. You know, it's about time, this town needs to do something right. Maybe this committee, maybe Zach's right, that this committee doesn't have maybe the perfect appointments. I'm not gonna get into that. But the point of it is, if you, this is a historic opportunity for this town, and you know that this town is failing right now. Economically, it's failing and can't deny it any longer. So you have to do something, and if the best businesses in this country know that DEI is critical to surviving, we ought to know that too. We can be a great town. You just have to make it great. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Rosalyn Swift, 14 Gary Drive, Enfield, Connecticut, 45 years here in town. I also have, am in agreement with the proposal for the DEI Committee. And I want to give a little background on myself, just so you can have an understanding that I do kinda know what's going on. I've had boots on the ground, I've been in several committees. So I've been on the Enfield People for People Board. I've been on the Enfield Safe Harbor Board. Then I was with ETC, Enfield Together Coalition. I've worked with KITE, I've worked with the After School Program. I also work for the Town of Enfield as an outreach worker. I work for CHR as a neighborhood liaison. So I'm saying all this to say that I have had a lot of experience in working and being in this town. And I truly do believe, like I said, I'm the founder of Ujima, and I founded the program with the hopes that we all could work together, we could share ideas, and it's not about them or they, but it's about we. And then as we work together to make things more inclusive, and I can truthfully say, I have experienced some good and a lot of bad. And so I'm speaking from experience. But I don't want the committee just to listen to people's emotions and people's feelings. You know, I was hurt, I was rejected, I was downgraded. I'm asking this committee to actually look at the data, hard, fast data that can be found, that shows without a shadow of a doubt that there are lack of inclusiveness, lack of equity, and even in this town. So it's not just about feelings. A lot of times when you talk about a committee like this, a DEI, you think about, you know, racism and hate and bringing division. This is to bring us together. This is so we can understand one another. And I implore, I almost beg, that every person, and I'm gonna say white, Caucasian, however you identify yourself, please, please, get involved with SURGE. Come to the meetings, look at the information, look at not just the feeling that I've been heard, I've been rejected, but actually look at the data. The data that shows what is wrong. And I think a lot of you know that a lot of data have come out throughout the years, down through the years, like I said, I've been here 45 years, that it's unfair treatment in the judicial system, it's unfair treatment in the medical, you know, it's unfair treatment in the educational system. I mean, the evidence shows that there is not equity in all of these areas. So again, like I say, I implore, this, I wish there was more I could do or say that it is not to fight about, but it is about to come together and to make it a better place. So I am definitely in agreement with this committee. SURGE and Ujima work as partners together, and they are encouraging and wanting white people, Caucasians, to join their committee, to really listen and see. So I thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening, Nikki Price, 1324 Enfield Street. When I publicly addressed the Town Council with my thoughts at the last meeting of September 19th, there were other concerns I had, but was limited to the five-minute time clock. I'm here tonight to continue my dialogue with the council. The concern I have is why we have an assistant town manager who is also Human Resources Director. Is that not, in your opinions, a conflict of interest? I agree with Counselor Mike Ludwig in his remarks on August 8th, that there is a difference between a town mayor, counselors, and town manager when it comes to support of a political party, regardless of prior relationships. A town manager, by nature of the office, must remain neutral to ensure the town's best interests are upheld. The proposed mural town ordinance should be heavily regulated as to ensure that such works of art are properly placed and its long-term aesthetics are maintained. Thank you for the time to express my thoughts.
Thank you.
Hello, 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 hello. My name is Chad Woodyard from 6 Parkway Drive. I'm here because I also am in agreement with the DEIA. I believe it is necessary for the future of Enfield. I was born and raised in DC, I'm not from here, my wife is. I moved here in 97. However, all of my sons will call the N-word in these schools here. My wife, all her siblings, every single one, will call the N-word in these schools here. Now, what I do understand is that we cannot change the thought process, and that is not our intent, but what we'd like to do is to make it uncomfortable for you to do such things or act upon such things. For instance, if you're in a movie theater, you can think fire all you want, but if you say it, you're in trouble. The same thing, we need a committee here that has some teeth, because we talked about racial injustice, we talked about lack of equity, we've talked- we talked about lack of equity, we've talked about that. Enough talk. I think it is now time to do something. Why? Because, not for us, but for the future of Enfield. There are a lot of beautiful people in Enfield that refuse to work together, to talk to each other, because the color of their skin, whether you're a Democrat or a Republican, it doesn't matter. When we see a problem that's a human right issue, if you're human, which I think we all are, it should matter. Okay? So let's please, let's remember this. A wise man said this, "Forget your color, remember your culture." That's America. You're American, I'm American. A Chinese person that comes in and gets, becomes American, said he or she is an American. We have to remember that. There is no one face, there's no one accent, it's different cultures. That's what makes America what it is. And I thought that Enfield was part of America. Now which part do you want it to be?
Thank you. Next, is there anybody else that would like to approach the council for the first time? Anybody for, okay, Robert?
Everything's, Bob T. Katz, 815 Woodgate Circle. Everything starts in the schools. That's where you teach children to work together, and I think they should be part of that committee. If you read the Sunday paper, this article by Peter Di Maria about the Sisters of the Poor, this is one of the best-written articles that I've ever seen, and we have to move on that. It has to be approved. We're not going to end up like over on, next to Six Flags, the Hendy Estate, that was trying to, the sisters tried to take it over, and it failed. A culinary institute went over there and it failed. If you go by that property, the mansion's gone, it's in disrepair, the trees are growing out of the driveway, and it's, and nobody's paying any taxes on it. So do we want that to happen to the Sisters of the Poor? I don't think so. This is a great opportunity to move the town in the right direction, and if they don't approve it, we're in trouble. What's happening in the schools? If you look at the school, the births versus the deaths in Enfield, the deaths for the last 10 years exceeded the births. The population is now at 39,000. At one time, it was like 54,000. So what's been going on since the 1970s? It's been going downhill since then. The Gorman York Report, that was published in '21, is fairly neutral. I heard the new one that's coming out, it's going to be devastating on the state of the Town of Enfield. So we have to move in that direction. And the population, by the way, according to the register of voters, is 39,735. Thompsonville is improving, but District 1 is starting to fail. The people, the age of the, in District 1 is pretty high, and the town is aging at a rapid rate. So we have to move along with the children in the school system and include them in any discussion on racial justice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody that would like to approach the council for the first time?
Melanie Dubio, 4 Francis Avenue.
Susan Budd, 2 Francis Avenue.
I'm not sure if we're in the right spot for this, but we actually have a couple complaints about Pizza Palace, the parking. It's, supposedly, I guess they were zoned entertainment, and we cannot get out of our driveways when they have their, you know, things going on, and it's pretty much six nights a week. I've got pictures that, you know, the garbage that's being left in front of our houses, we can't even get out of our driveways. I've literally had to pull over our front lawn just to get out. I don't think a fire truck would be able to get down the street or an ambulance. And, yeah, it was bad before, but now since they've been zoned entertainment, it's really bad. And like I said, you know, he doesn't want to work with us. We've been told that if we don't like it, then we can move. I've lived at 2 Francis Avenue, and we bought a house at 4 Francis Avenue, so I've lived there all my life, and, yeah, since he's gone to the bar, it's totally unbelievable. And I just wonder if anything can be done. We've been to the zoning, they say it's the police department's, you know, doing. The police department says it's the zoning committee that's got to do something, and I'm not sure what else we can do. But it's just, like I said, I've got pictures of the track, you know, I'm going out there picking up, I've got little kids running around, I've got broken beer bottles in front of my house, and so, like I said, I just wonder if there's anything that can be done about it. He's got 33 parking spaces, one's a handicap, and the amount of people that he's got going in there is far exceeds. And I know Highland Park is the same way. I've talked to people on Highland Park, and it goes all the way down their street, you know, both sides of the street. If possible, we would like to get permit parking only. I'm not sure if that's something that we could do, you know, just residents being allowed to park on the street. And I can't talk for Highland Park, but that's what we would like on Francis Avenue. I have talked to a few people that live there.
Or what else can be done about the parking, even if it's on one side of the street, not both? Because if one car is coming up the street and another one's coming down, there's no way, somebody's going to have to back up. So parking on both sides of the streets, three-quarters of the way down on both streets, it's still a residential area, and we would like to...
Well, there's trucks, and again, I've got pictures where we've got a stop sign at the top of Francis Avenue, and the truck is parked within a foot. Like, I could probably get both of us in between there, and that's it. And, you know, if I pull out of the street, I'm going to get hit, but then that's going to be our fault, because we're pulling out into Enfield Street, and nothing's being done. They're all over the median, everything, and it just, yeah.
Or just our driveways alone. They pull right up to the very beginning of the driveway, and the other car is just right on the other side where they're actually part of our driveway. So when we back out, we've got to pull up, back out, we're going to end up hitting another car, and it's going to, again, be our fault, because we're hitting, but you can't see, you can't...
We had a crash here a couple weeks ago where, you know, somebody went down the street, came back up, and took out several cars. It was a hit and run, you know, they took off. But again, you know, people are coming out of bars, we've got little kids living on the street, you know, they're playing, and, yeah, so...
So we'd like consideration on the parking somehow, and leadership, what do we do? Where do we go to change it, or get, you know, have it parking one side, not both sides, or...
Permit parking.
Permit parking.
This isn't a back and forth, you know, we can't respond to right now.
Are we in the right spot coming to zoning, or here to come? Because we're told the police, as you said earlier, the police will say, "No, it's not their problem, you've got to go to zoning," and zoning says, "No, it's not their problem, you have to go to the, you know, to the police." So we're kind of stuck.
Yeah. We can respond in counselor communications, but we can't respond right now.
Okay. And how does that go about? Oh, okay, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council for the first time? Okay.
I live at 22 Prospect Street. I'm not going to say too much, but I just wanted to piggyback off some of the stuff that I was listening to. I grew up here. I used to have like the slightest bit of pride living in this town because of diversity and like where we live, like summers, and everybody would always, you know, everybody knows that summers and East Winds are very non-diverse in any way, shape, or form. So I used to like, be like, "Enfield's kind of all right, right?" It's not. But I realized in the last few years, I have never had a teacher of color growing up here. I went to St. Bernard's, I went to JFK, and I went to Enfield High. I graduated in 2007, and we still, to this day in Enfield, have, I'm going to look up a picture that I was sent. In 2018, 2019, if we have 30.7% of our students being students of color, we have 3.3% of teachers. 32.2%, and we have 4.5% of teachers in 2019 to 2020. 33 to, 33.9%, we have 4.7% and up to 2021, and currently, or as up to when this was, was 35% of students of color, so 4.8%. So my question, I suppose, is really, how do we say that we strive to be inclusive when, if you look at every single one of the people on this council, is at least white passing if you are not a white person on this council? How can we, as Enfield, say that we are trying to be inclusive if we do not actually act on situations when they happen, while they're happening? And they're happening to our kids. Like, this happened to a 14-year-old kid, and this happens to 14-year-old kids all the time. We just don't hear about it. It happens all the time. Every single day, there's another story. And if you're not looking for it, you won't necessarily find it, and it's really easy to stay inside this little bubble, like, that we, that even I was in. I've been in my whole life. I was raised here. I'm this little white girl. I've been raised this, I've been raised this whole way my whole life. Like, I did not, I did not have a clue. I thought that I knew what I was talking about. I had no clue what I was talking about. If you choose to stay inside of that bubble, that is white privilege, because you have that option. People don't have that option, and there's a lot of people in this town that do not have that option any single day that they wake up. I met, I talked to a family a few weeks ago at the Board of Ed meeting, and they have lived here for eight years, and they have no idea the difference of Hazardville to Thompsonville, because they don't go outside of their house. Because they're not comfortable. Because nobody makes, nobody... It's not my place, it's not my place to stay. Why? That's, never mind. They don't go outside of their house, and they have lived here for eight years. That is just a small piece of the very, very large puzzle that this, I hope, DEI committee will at least take a piece, a chunk out of.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council for the first time? Anybody the second time? You'll have three minutes this round?
Pat Tibode, 20 Cora Street. This is just a quick addendum regarding the school board. One of the seats is a dedicated school liaison who works directly with the, with the school official that is most responsible for these issues there. So that seems to be a very strong link and a clear involvement of the school. I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like, okay?
Zach Sinoni, 6 Howard Street. Again, I emphasize liaison, partnership, two different things. I'm minor in English. Those are not the same thing. And I just don't get why we had, four weeks ago, Mayor Crisati took extensive effort to create that community conversation. Thank you. This committee, I'm proud of it. I'm proud that the town is acting. That is something to be proud of. We have never, in the history of this town, put something to be deliberated before this council like this committee, and that speaks volumes to the people that we have on this council that have pushed for these things. But if we're going to do something, we should do it right. And it doesn't mean it has to be voted down, but it does mean that we sit back and think, "Did we reach out to the superintendent? Did we reach out to Mrs. Cox Blackwell? Did we reach out to the board?" I know people who did, and they would say that a committee should have been a partnership. It should have been a joint committee. Racism, prejudices, they start in adolescence. And then, of course, also, I want to emphasize, this committee actually addresses far more than race, it addresses issues of LGBTQ issues, it issues disabilities. I'm heavily affiliated with a lot of LGBTQ advocacy issues and disabilities. I worked in special education, so there's a lot of other things that are going to be addressed here, and that's fabulous. But I think if we really want to be as strong as we can with this committee, that it should have been a partnership with our Board of Ed, and it still can be. Amendments can be made. So I think it's important that we have that conversation when voting on that. So that's all I want to say about that, is liaison is one thing, and again, I reiterate a few, I'm curious if someone had reached out to Mrs. Cox Blackwell, or reached out to our superintendent, but Mrs. Cox Blackwell has been very insistent that she does have a full plate. So when we're talking about how do we best benefit our school system, we think about probably a partnership so that we can help maybe take the load off and help tackle those issues, because I don't think a liaison goes far enough in addressing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would approach the council? Okay, I declare public communications over. Thank you.
Item number eight, counselor communication. Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Thank you. I just have a couple of items through the mayor to the town manager. The light on the intersection of Phoenix and South Road, it has a protected green. The protected green arrow is actually pointing straight up and not to the left. It's been like that for a while. Every time I drive through there, I make a mental note to say something, then I forget. So I don't know how that needs to be moved, but it almost, the whole light fixture for the green arrow seems like it was, I don't know, moved counterclockwise. Very odd. Thank you to everybody who came up and spoke about the DEI committee. I am very excited about this committee, and I'm proud to be on the council when something like this is coming up. To Melanie and the other lady on Francis Avenue, again, through the town manager, the mayor to the town manager, I was actually, a couple of other people who lived on Francis Avenue reached out to me over the weekend and sort of voiced the same concerns, parking on both sides of the road, trash, nip bottles, glass, beer bottles, food everywhere up and down. And I don't know if the town manager will have additional information in her report, but understand, we heard you, and I believe that there are some conversations going on with the police department on what we can do and options that we may have for that street. So thank you for coming up and speaking, and just understand that there are other people who are voicing those same concerns, and I understand that there was sort of a hit and run there, and it's just lined with traffic, and I guess this has really just been an uptick in that since Jimmy's has reopened. So hang in there, we're working on a solution. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to say to the folks on Francis, I'm your district counselor. I want to give you my number. I don't know if you have something to write with, it's on the town website, but my home number is 860-253-9590, and I can, I can definitely say it again if that's easier for you. Please call me and leave a message later today, you know, even, and I'll call you back just to, let's figure this out together. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Mangini, and then Congress.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Sikala did touch on the parking situation and the traffic issue over on Francis and Highland, and town manager's, you know, well aware, so hopefully we can get a resolution to that issue. I do very, you know, briefly want to address the diversity, equity, inclusion issue. It saddens me that we still are faced with these concerns. It saddens me that we still are faced with these concerns. I mean, here we are, 2022, and we still haven't accepted each other as humans, as family. And it is important that we do get into the school system and start at the very low level of preschool and teach our children how to be respectful and loving and caring for one another. That's extremely important. But I'm pleased that we do have a committee forming and that that will be very effective. I want to see that grow and develop, and let's, let's have some good positive movement in that direction. And lastly, I do want to mention that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and breast cancer does affect not only women, but it does affect men. I, years ago, did lose a friend, male friend, who fell victim to breast cancer. So let's keep that in our thoughts and prayers, that there are many people out there suffering from breast cancer, and this is the month that we remember that. Thank you.
Counselor Nelson, and then Counselor Pisner. And then Counselor Finger.
First of all, to clarify, Zach, we received the information late Friday night. It was not available for leadership to discuss. So at our caucuses, we were given very little information about this. Second, the parking on Francis. Melanie, too bad you didn't know a police officer, like, maybe a traffic officer or something. But, so this is what I'm going to give you. I'm going to give you solutions, not just promises and hopes and stuff like that, but there's occupancy for every single commercial building there is. If we have to get the fire marshal involved to show up there on a Thursday or a Friday night when they're having a live venue, see if there's over occupancy. That could be very expensive for Pizza Palace if they do it. That's an enforcement action that can be taken immediately. Second is hours of operation. Planning and zoning puts hours of operation on live events. So if they've got a live band playing, and I don't know if that's the case or not, they have to stop playing the music at a certain time. So if it is live music, are they playing past 10 o'clock, especially in a residential neighborhood? Because I know over at Stop &amp; Shop, they were going to do that, but there were no residents around to be an issue. And the last thing we can do, if it, if the owner really doesn't want to work well with the neighbors, is, wouldn't it be sad to see a DUI checkpoint right out front on Route 5? Because we all know the cars that got hit, the reason he drove away is because he probably had one too many. I lost my father to a drunk driver, so I sympathize 100%. And we have to listen to this before somebody does get killed, and we have to do something about it. And if we've got to get Earl, the fire chief, involved to start checking occupancy, that's what we've got to do. This has been an ongoing problem, and it's only going to get worse. They have zero respect for the neighbors, and it's up to us to help them. They've been to planning and zoning, they've been to the police department, and now they're here. So let's show them that we're listening and do something about this. Next, Ellen, did you get a chance to look at the sidewalks on Louise and Belinda?
Good. Oh, I'm sorry, through the chair, yeah. Through the mayor. I'm sorry. Yeah.
No, that, that is scheduled for Thursday, when we go out and look at those types of projects.
Okay, thank you. And then through the mayor, Representative Hall had called me, and Upper Abbey Road, where it goes to Broadbrook Road by Taft Lane and all through there, have any of you driven that road lately? It's horrendous. And is it, through the mayor, is it on the roads project for this? It is?
Including the sidewalks. It's clear.
I believe that it is.
Okay. Do we have any idea when that's going to start?
No, but I can find out.
Okay, I appreciate that. And she's getting calls left and right about this also. And then my last one would be, have you guys looked at the adoptive spots throughout Enfield and how some of these are atrocious? Why are there still signs on them if these people aren't taking care of them? How does that work? Do they donate money and we take care of them? Or when they adopt it, are they supposed to take care of it?
So the beautification committee has that type of oversight, and they've recently received several new members. And I have asked them to take a new look at how they run that program, because there are several prominent adoptive spot sites that are way overgrown and not being cared for. So hopefully, we will have a report back from them in the next month or so as to what they're going to do to strengthen the program. Some of them are still being very well-maintained.
Yes.
But the few, the one that I can think of in front of Longhorns specifically is terrible.
That's the one. And I don't want to mention the name of the company, because it's, you know, but if I were them, I'd take the sign down. That's how embarrassing it looks over there. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pisner.
Okay, again, through the mayor to the town manager. I got a phone call from one of our constituents. There's a post on Facebook from the Enfield Economic Development Commission, and they were looking for people to give a call for an RFQ for on-call property maintenance services. And they asked me if I knew about it, because it's somebody who has a landscaping business. I didn't know anything about it. So if I could just get some clarification on that and why, why this is not being done in-house? Why we're looking for trash removal, lawn mowing, and tree and brush removal outside of in-house?
So we do try to keep a lot of those in-house, and we've tried to have the Public Works employees do Wednesdays and a few other overtime shifts in order to deal with some of the property maintenance issues. Unfortunately, we've had limited success with that. There was some overtime shift scheduled, but we are spread very thin, and during the tall grass season, it becomes very difficult. So the offer is always made in-house first, but the list is getting long. So what we've done is we've worked to augment it by going out for on-call services, which means when you get a call or anybody gets a call and people are yelling about XYZ Street, we are able to more nimbly pivot and have a list that have already been approved with insurance and licenses, et cetera, that we can call. They go out and do the work that's specified. They present a bill to us, and that becomes the basis for us to apply the lien so that the city may be reimbursed, and all that money flows back into the Property Maintenance Fund.
Okay, so this is mostly for our blighted properties and such.
Yes.
Okay, clarification. I just wanted to make sure. The second thing, and this actually, mayor through, and I think this is going to be a question for Sheila. I've gone on to check, obviously, I can't look at all the meetings, and I try to watch as many as I can, but I do try to go in and pull agendas and minutes. And I'm noticing that a lot of the committees don't have their minutes posted. Is, whose job is it to post the minutes? Is that, who puts the minutes when they're received?
The only minutes my office posts online is council minutes. Those belong to the departments and the committees and the chairs and the secretaries of those committees. So my office is only responsible for council minutes.
Okay, so what about the beautification and the conservation?
If they have a staff liaison assigned to them, generally, I believe it's the duty of the staff liaison to post them.
Okay, did not know that. So I'm glad I asked.
Do you agree with that?
Yes, yes. But just to also clarify, the FOI laws are clear that the minutes have to be filed. They're courtesy on the actual website. So there may be minutes that have been filed, but they may not appear because if it's a smaller committee, they may not have access to put them onto the website. We can actually work with those committees, and we can have that done through the town manager's office and have them all funneled through us so that they are available and accessible to the public, if that's something the council would like us to work on.
Because I looked on there, and it seemed like they were all up to date. And then, starting like in May, there's no minutes for probably a half a dozen different committees. So I, it was a question that I just felt was worth asking. So, but yeah, so if you could look into that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Despard.
I thought I was.
Oh, excuse me. Counselor Finger, then Counselor Despard.
So a couple of things. One is for the beautification committee, I am the liaison for that, they haven't held a, or had a quorum in quite a few meetings in the past. So really, there's been no minutes that I can remember to be approved. So we haven't had a quorum, which hurts even for Kenny's thing. So I mean, they, with the new members, maybe we'll start having quorums. I know the secretary who does it, and she's a fantastic person, and she does keep everything up to date, but can't post nothing if you don't have nothing to post legally. Second thing is, people, I had Zach, I just want to correct you on one thing, Zach. There's not five Republicans up here, there's six Democrats, four Republicans. I am unaffiliated. All right? So I am not part of either party. So just to, you know, because you said five Republicans. And people have asked me why. I find myself to be part of both. I'll be honest with you. I find myself agreeing with some things with the Democrats and some things with the Republicans. So it's kind of hard to be me and be just somebody else. So I don't know if that's the right words I want to use. I just found myself to be more useful for myself to come across to the property taxpayers in this town at this time, to be unaffiliated. What that means, basically, I have my choice of caucus after 90 days of the group, or I can be my own leadership and, you know, my own caucus. Haven't decided exactly what I'm going to do yet. It's tough, you know what I mean? Because you make friends, you have family, you have people you've known for, Bob and I, what, 45 years? Both, one daughter in basketball and one daughter in soccer. Cindy and I have been, I was the first one to nominate Cindy to ever run for an office. Become friends with a lot of people up here. And Ken and I have known each other for a long time, and Marie and I have known, Marie was my first realtor, the first house that we bought. So that's where I find myself at this point. I just, I can't commit to any single party at this point because I feel like I'm part of both. It's tough, you know what I mean? It's tough. So it's something I have to work out for myself, especially if I decide to run in the next election. One of the things I want to say, the other thing I want to say is, this DEI program, I'm okay with it, but there's wording on this I have issues with that's here tonight. There's certain things on here I have issues with. I'll bring them up when we come to discuss it. But I will tell you this much, I was born and a small raised kid on Albany Avenue in Hartford. So if that young girl is still here about saying, you know, white person's privileges, try being my parents. All right? When you're born on Albany Avenue in Hartford, it's tough. And I was, when I was young and joined, decided to join the military, I was a Yankee down in the South, South Carolina, all right, Fort Jackson, South Carolina. And I was, I won't say it too much, but let's put it this way, my friends were African-American, and I was abused by some drill sergeants, okay, because I was a Yankee and white, hanging around with African-Americans. So I don't want to hear about white privilege, to me. Anybody else is fine, but don't insult me, because that young girl did. That's my opinion. So the things I will bring up during, when we talk about this, I'll bring up my issues with the wording, because I will ask the attorney for his opinion about my changes to this. And as far as Francis has, you've got good people up here that are going to handle everything that you can, to make sure it happens. Like you said, you've got, you know, Mr. Hopkins, Counselor Hopkins, who is a district counselor, they'll handle it for you. They are, they're all good people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other? Counselor Despard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, I too want to thank everyone that came out and spoke, and, you know, especially those that spoke in support of the DEI Committee. I just wanted to correct for the record that the Board of Education was consulted during our process of developing this proposal. They were one of a number, a host of community partners and stakeholders that were consulted. Ultimately, we felt like the issues addressed by this committee are better suited to the town. School issues are incredibly important, but they're just one part of the broader town picture. Also, you know, there's already a DEI coordinator in the, in the schools, and they will have ample opportunity to communicate and collaborate with this committee and/or either directly or through the liaison created by this proposal. So I just, I could have waited until the discussion for that, but I just, I felt like I wanted to say that now. So, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ungare.
All right, good evening. I just wanted to say that it's been a privilege for me to serve as the minority leader this past year, and with our recent addition of our town counselor member, Ken Nelson, it's my pleasure to offer him the position of minority leader. Ken's extensive knowledge and experience, having served many years on the town council and many years as chairman on planning and zoning, will make him an effective, knowledgeable minority leader. He'll serve this caucus and council well. I tip my hat, and I thank you for accepting this position. I look forward to continuing to serve this town council and all the committees that I currently serve on. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ludwig.
Through the mayor of the mayor's, you may address this. We can put up, if they're not there and if the residents want, no parking signs. At least it gives the officers, if they're parking, an opportunity to put a ticket. And I'm not suggesting we want to be heavy-handed, but if, one way you get rid of parking issues is to have a no parking sign, and someone gets a ticket, and that word happens pretty quickly. And I think that might be at least the initial way. You might address it in your, you know, as you look for some of the larger issues, because they, again, I'm not, you know, the business is on the corner, they're just, that's their location. And I don't, I don't want people to, again, I'm not trying to defend the business, but I mean, they, you know, again, we can put no parking signs there, ticket them, and then that'll change whoever's getting a ticket pretty quickly, and then some of the other suggestions that were made, so they're not parking on people's front lines. And I see, we've done it, as you know, all over town. There's other sections of town where we put no parking signs. So this might, again, I don't know if it's something you're already working on, can be referred to public safety, you know, again, but I think it's at least an initial solution as you work through some of the larger ones. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I just have a couple of comments to make. First of all, at our last meeting, I did make mention of a town worker and the school personnel who helped in a situation at a football game, at Enfield High's football game. And I want to also mention a couple of other people who really should be recognized for their heroic work to help revive this young man at the Enfield High School football game. And I do want to recognize paramedic Colin Sweeney and EMT Isabella Raviv. Their work that they did that night at that football game is second to none. They took some criticism because they walked to the scene. But knowing the role of an EMT, they have to keep their blood pressure down so that their fingers are able to operate in a way that, for them to do their job. And I didn't recognize them last week. I know that we will be recognizing them, and they will receive special recognition at a next, at a football game that will be coming up, a home football game. And just to say that the young man is doing, he's in stable condition still, he's still being monitored, and, but they need to be recognized. The EMS staff here in Enfield, we should be very proud of the work that they do in helping our citizens. And in this particular situation, the athletes that were involved in this situation. So I wanted to mention that. The second thing that I want to mention is that a very special visit with a wonderful lady who resides at Four Polk Drive, her name is Heather Stewart. And I went over there, she had contacted us, and I know that Counselor Ludwig went and saw her last year also. And I presented her with a proclamation, and it's for this awareness, because Enfield did recognize it on Friday. And it's called Limp Girdle Muscular Dystrophy Awareness Day that we did have. I sat down with her for quite some time. She's a lovely lady who's had this rare disease over the past 30 years. And her wish is to raise awareness of this particular disease to not only our community but to surrounding communities. And this disorder affects muscles closest to the body, specifically the muscles of her shoulders, upper arms, pelvic area, and thighs. It's a debilitating condition. It's a debilitating condition, and it really has significant impact on people's lives that are affected by it. And it was really, you know, heartwarming to me, very touching, that she is a self-sufficient lady who, or woman, who doesn't rely on anybody. She drives herself, she does everything in her house herself, she really doesn't have that many people that are helping her, and, but she, she fights every day with this, and so I just wanted to mention that to everybody, you know, moving forward, you know, September 30th, and I know that the state of Connecticut also did recognize her with a proclamation. So it was nice that the state recognized her, we recognized her, and for the, you know, few people that have this rare disorder, you know, it was very touching. So I did want to mention that tonight in regard to that. There are a lot of, you know, good events that are happening around town, not going to get into all of them, but on October 7th this week, there's a ribbon cutting at the senior center, so if any seniors are out there, come on out, there's Triad, the Senior Safety Day, and those new bocce courts are going to be opened up, so I know that's a, that's a big, you know, it's a, you know, I can't wait to, myself, to go over there and play a couple of games, all right? So, not saying that I do fit in that category of a senior, but, you know, they'll welcome me over there, you know, so. But I do, I did want to mention that October 7th, there are two events that are at the senior center, the bocce ribbon cuttings at 11:00 and 12:00 with Triad, so I did want to mention to that. I do want to mention to the town manager, can we maybe even have, as a special guest, get an update from the JFK Building Committee on their progress? And I would like an update, and I think the council would like to hear the update from Mr. Daigle and his committee. Thank you very much. One final comment, Counselor Nelson.
Through the mayor to the town manager, all our garages and dealers in town got a letter from the assessor, and it lists their repair plates and dealer plates, and it asked them to identify what the plate is on. Dealer plates and repair plates shouldn't be on anything. They should be used for temporary use only, test driving, test driving a vehicle of a customer's, a new car, stuff like that. And so he lists certain things that, you know, maybe your plate should be on, but that's against the state law, so none of these really work. But on the bottom of it, it says, "Any plate number is not accounted for will be subject to an estimated value." So if you follow state law, and those plates sit in a drawer, and then when I take your car for a road test, I put the plate on it, drive it, when I come back, I put the plate back in the drawer, he's going to tax me what for following state law and not driving on that? Yes, I understand certain people will put it on a brand-new Corvette, but most people are upstanding and they follow the laws, and they're taking this as a threat. And it doesn't have anywhere on here, because I said, well, just list a repair shop. This says for new inventory, demonstrating inventory, and then it lists wreckers and other things, doesn't say anything about automotive repairs. So if you're working on a dealer's car at your automotive facility, and you have repair plates, which is legal, you can't list them on here. So what's he going to tax them on? This is just another step in the attempt to just, I'm going to say it, hijack the Enfield residents with this assessor. And, you know, along with that, I'd like to know what's going on with the attorney, and get an update from our liaisons. Oh, wait, they haven't met with them yet. Nobody knows anything. So if we could get an update.
Well, let's, let's move forward on that when we get to, you know, the other reports.
Oh, I would have brought it up then. This, okay. Thanks, Bob. All set.
Okay, thank you. Next town manager report, item nine.
Good evening. The most probably pressing item that I'll address is Francis Street. We received these complaints maybe about six weeks ago, and the Police Department Traffic Division has completed its study. They have five or six options, including various parking alterations, including no parking on one side of the street, the resident-only option. They've also asked for a zoning assessment, and there's also options for drawing a line around the adjoining streets, because as we know, if the two streets that immediately abut that business are affected, then if people are going to look to park elsewhere. So they've taken a very global approach to this. I think that it would be appropriate to have the neighbors weigh in before the town manager's office makes a recommendation, because I think they're the ones that are living there. They should be the ones to have some say into what option is chosen. The assistant town manager and I met with the owners of Jimmy's Pub, which is newly renovated, they've done the inside over. There's the Pizza Pal, which is mostly, I guess, pickup and delivery, that is adjacent to it. It is a very small footprint. So we did discuss with the owner some options for him in terms of trying to combat some of the impact on the residential neighborhood. And clearly, when you have that type of close adjacency with two different uses, there's always going to be these types of issues. They are fortunate that they have an arrangement with a neighboring business where they can park most of their employee cars, so that frees up a number of spots for patrons. But the other issue that we're concerned about is if people try to start parking across the street, or on those streets that run off of the east side of Route 5, that that crossing piece is very dangerous. So there's a whole bunch of different considerations, but at this point, since we've just now received the recommendations, I think it would probably be appropriate if we actually had a meeting within the neighborhood, or had, have them come so that they could hear the different options and have a say. The one that I think is being recommended is going to appeal to some people, but not to everybody, so that's why I think that it would be the first step of what we should do.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of the motion for tonight, if the council does enact a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee, I just wanted to say to the people who are still here that we would put something on the website, and people would then be able to apply to serve on that commission. But until the council takes action, that committee is not listed, so maybe as part of whatever happens later on tonight in the agenda, we can spend a little bit of time talking about how people who are interested in being involved would actually do so. Because I think that that's one of those missing links in times, communication-wise, people want to get involved, but they're not sure how. And the final piece is, I did pass out, upon request, the latest ARPA funding allotment. There's been no changes since the last time I did this report, other than we have put in a placeholder amount of $50,000 for the grant writer. It is not to exceed that. We may actually employ several different grant writers based on different grants. There is a lot of money that is becoming available through the infrastructure bills that are flowing from the federal government to the state. So we are looking to actually hone certain applications for certain purposes. You heard tonight, the water pollution control issues, we have infrastructure issues, there's a lot of opportunity. So that number has now brought us down to $808,602 in reserve. The Small Business Assistance Program launched officially on Saturday, we've already received a couple of applications and some questions. That will run through the month, and up next is the nonprofit assistance. I think that you should be prepared to think about the fact that we may exceed the amount of money that we've allocated in terms of the people who may want to participate in that program. East Hartford recently paused their business assistance through ARPA program because of the excessive number of applications received. So having a little bit of reserve is actually a good thing right now. On the second side, you will see that I penciled in and yellow highlighted the item that's on your agenda for later, and I put it there specifically because if you look at the item above it, the Water Pollution Control Pump Station to be appropriated in fiscal year '24 for $468,000, I used it there because I thought it was appropriate for planned usage, because it's my opinion that, or I was told that, it's the opinion of the council that they may want to marry the ARPA funding with a capital improvement fund for this project. So that's where, if that is successful tonight, we will pencil that in there for planned usage in conjunction with next year's budget. So that's where we are with all the projects listed.
Okay, thank, thank you. Hold on a second, I want to see if Attorney Talberg has anything.
Well, I suppose I would respond to Counselor Nelson's question about the independent review, and I would be mindful, or I am mindful of the fact that the independent review of revaluation issues addresses, you know, complex legal issues, pending tax appeals, potential litigation, conceivably potential personnel issues, and so it wouldn't be appropriate, given the nature of that, to discuss much publicly about it, except to say that the review is well underway, that the attorney was in town hall this afternoon and had a very productive meeting, I think, with the council liaisons, Counselor Ludwig, Counselor Santinella, and Counselor Hopkins. My understanding is that those councilor liaisons will then report back through the caucuses, so that the full council has an opportunity to both have input and be fully up to date as to the progress of the review. The plan is to have those council liaisons meet at least once a month with the attorney, but they all have a direct line of communication to the attorney. So if any individual counselor has questions or would like input, I'd suggest you confer with one of your council, council liaisons, and I would defer to the council liaisons if they wanted to add anything to that.
Thank you, Attorney Talberg. Counselor Ludwig.
You know, I won't address that, but just a question through the mayor and town manager, just curious, with the consultant we hired to make sure we're spending the money in compliance, with the money we have in reserve, can it be used pending what may happen in the winter when people may not be able to afford their oil and gas bills? Can this money be used to offset that money? I mean, if anyone just filled their oil tank, it's at least $800 to $1,000. It's going to get worse once, and if you've been paying attention, the strategic reserve pens who you believe is actually now depleted, so not only are we going to have a cost issue, we may have a supply issue. I would like us to be able, if it's within the compliance, that we be able to save this money, because I think we're going to need fuel assistance this year, and for me, someone in your home, be able to, or wherever, apartment, be able to, us help them with heat, as much as I want to do infrastructure, is more important, in my opinion. So I don't know if it's, if we can ask the consultant, if the regulations allow us, I would like to recommend that, and it's great to hear that if we're going to have, I'm sorry, I would like to see more businesses do this, I'd rather be able to give them, I mean, I'm sorry, they are the ones that, you know, of small business was the brunt of this in this town, and they deserve, again, I still think if they actually went under, they still should be able to get, we should be able to help them with their debt, but that's a whole nother argument. But if you wouldn't mind, if you, if they already know the answer, great, but if not, if we can get an answer back from the consultant, it'd be great.
So disadvantaged households and their economic difficulties is an eligible use. As you saw, we gave a small sum of money to the Director of Social Services so that she could use it at her discretion in order to keep people in their homes, or enhance, or do anything that would help that household. So yes, it is an eligible use. I can check specifically on fuel bank issues locally and see if that's something that we can link to.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I think it's going to be, unfortunately, I think it's going, as the strategic reserve is depleted in the next week or so, I think folks who are going to have to go fill their oil are going to be in for a huge surprise with the cost. So I'd love to be able to make sure we had some help if needed. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to keep kind of the public updated on this, I think it's important to note, you know, we had a, I think bipartisan list of questions to bring forward through this, through this investigation, comprehensive list. Personally, I am very interested in getting those answers. I'm not going to rest until those are answered, you know, for good or for bad, but I think what we shouldn't do here is, we should, we should not play politics with this. We have people who are committed to doing it, and, you know, sharing this information far and wide, I think, is going to lead to attaining of that investigation. The answers have to happen, but I don't want to play this, this politics game back and forth. I think that, that does a disservice to what we're trying to do here. So I think in that spirit, the liaisons, I believe, agreed to operate with some kind of silence while these answers are being found, so that we're not, you know, spreading this far and wide, potentially tainting that investigation. There are important questions that have been asked, this affects just about everybody in town, and we need those answers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to, oh, okay, I didn't.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I apologize.
Okay.
All right, so through the mayor to the town attorney, seeing that I'm unaffiliated, can you get me what's going on? Since I can't ask my caucus, I don't have a caucus, I'm my own caucus, of what's happening with the, with the investigation? And two, to the mark of Mr., Counselor Hopkins, he promised to keep the public involved with everything, and I don't know why he changed his mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to 10, are there any reports of special committees?
May I respond briefly? So, Counselor, Counselor Finger, I learned at 3:35, I think Friday, that you had changed your party affiliation, and so it took some time to research the implication of that change of party affiliation, and as I told you in the hallway, one of the implications of your renouncing your membership in the Democratic Party is that there's a waiting period pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 9-59, and that for a period of 90 days, from the day to the filing of your application for transfer or erasure from your name of the Democratic Party role, you're not allowed to vote on any political appointments, and you're not allowed to caucus with either of the parties. So this is hot off the press news, and given that new circumstance, if you're going to be a caucus of one, we'll have to find some way to keep you updated, sir, and we'd be happy to do that. Now that you're closer to me, it'll be easier.
I can reach over to you now.
Okay. Does that suffice? No touching.
Thank you. Counselor Santinella, we are on number 10, report of special committees moving onward. Thank you.
Two things, and it's, it's more of a question coming from the Fire Chiefs Association Committee, that through the mayor to the town manager or the assistant town manager. We began a process some time ago to look at premium pay for our firefighters. I have been under the impression that we were still waiting for information to come from some of the districts. I'm now under the impression that we have all of the information that we need to be able to compensate our firefighters for premium pay during the COVID period, using the same formula and metrics that we did for town employees and for members of the Board of Ed. And so I think we need to move forward on that. It hasn't been on the agenda, but if we are prepared to go, I think we need to bring that to resolution, because it's been out there for a little bit too long. Another item coming from the General Government and Finance Committee is an issue that has come up before, and it's about out-of-state license plates in, in town. Again, this week, two phone calls from really upset residents who are seeing neighbors with vehicles that are licensed in a different state. It is agitating to them, as it should be, since they are licensed in and registered in Connecticut and paying their appropriate taxes to see other people who are not. I can tell you that in the conversations I've had recently, I've asked, because this, this did come up in General Government and Finance before, you know, to what extent are people willing to tolerate us being aggressive, going after people who are violating the rules? And to a person, they have said categorically, "As aggressive as you can be, because people are just breaking the law, and it's costing everybody else money." So I'm bringing it up again. I think that we, in our committee, want to address this, and we really need to put together a plan that we can present and get the public input on what we're going to do, that includes fair notice to people about what is expected of them if they have a vehicle here in, in Enfield, and what needs to be done. So I would like to put this So I would like to put this on the next meeting agenda for discussion and for us to kind of move this ball forward as well. So those are my two committee reports today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ludwig.
Just to be clear, so I, five, four years ago, I'd been all for this. I just want to make clear what we're recommending. I am not, government should not be putting neighbor versus neighbor. I understand it's frustrating. I understand it. But we have enough issues where neighbors are calling on neighbors, and we're, so as long as, I want to make sure what we're recommending here, I have no problem educating people. Yeah, again, but if we start, hey, my neighbor's renting a car from, it's in an Idaho plate, and they're calling the cops on it, again, I just want to make sure we're clear here. I am not for having the town be a referee on people's, even though I understand it's frustrating. So I just want to make sure that's what you're, because I was pretty clear in the meeting that we had.
Can I respond to you? Yeah, so absolutely. I am not suggesting that we have neighbors, that it be the Hatfields and the McCoys, the Enfield addition. I'm sorry, no, but there are, there are, there are options for us to use technology and other.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, thank you, I'm sorry, okay. That there are other options that can help us to identify people. This is, we are not looking to put this in the police department's hands, but these are things that are less invasive but will resolve the problem. So yes, thank you.
Moving forward here, going to item 11, unfinished business, discussion resolution, the Raphael Land Swap Referral Section 8-24 to Planning and Zoning Commission. At this point in time, this is something that has been brought up, it's been brought up years ago, was brought up, it was tabled last time, and I am asking for a motion to remove from the agenda.
Motion to remove from the agenda.
Counselor Pisner, and a second from Counselor Mangini. Is there any discussion? By a show of hands, all in favor? And unanimous in favor. Moving on to item 12, consent agenda, there is one item that's on the consent agenda. And so for November, there will be, what we're recommending, there will be one meeting, and that will be held on November 14th. So the discussion resolution, and this is consent agenda to cancel the November 21st regular meeting of the town council. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Mangini, and a second.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Sakala. All, excuse me.
Sorry, I just want to be clear, if we can ask this guy, I don't understand why we're canceling it. I just want to be clear why. I understand there's a meeting on the 14th because of the election, but it is a regular meeting, and so I'm just curious why we're canceling, that's all.
We are canceling because of the election. And then we didn't figure that, you know, we would have the next meeting, which would be on the 14th, and then instead of having back-to-back meetings, that is also the week of, shortened week, people might be traveling for the holiday for Thanksgiving. So that was the main concern for that, because of the back-to-back weeks. I didn't feel that it was appropriate to have back-to-back council meetings.
If something comes up, though, will we be able to have a special meeting?
If, if there's something that comes up, and if there's a possibility that if we do need a special meeting, then there's that possibility. Okay? So all in favor? Let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, against? And any abstentions? Doug, I didn't, was yours up? You're.
I was up on the positive.
Okay, all right, so nine in favor, two against. Okay, next, appointments to the town council. The Ethics Commission, the term of office of Sherri Lee Riddick expires on 10/31/22. Reappointment would be until 10/31/2024. Do I have a motion to reappoint Sherri Lee?
Motion.
Deputy Mayor Sakala, and a second from Counselor Mangini. All in favor? Raise your hands, 1, 2, 3. Against? And abstentions? Okay, 10 in favor and one abstention. There is no, there are no appointments for, under item C, town manager appointed, council approved, and D, appointments, P and Z, commission appointed. There are none. Moving onward to E and F. Well, there were two items that were for business that, they were applying for Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant. If we go to item E, we're going to be, I'm going to be asking for a motion to remove this from the agenda due to the fact that we do not have a signed letter of intent. All right, so we will be, no, we're going to move to remove from the agenda.
So moved.
Counselor Nelson, and a second, Counselor Mangini, by a show of hands, all in favor. And that looks unanimous. So 11 in favor, there are none against. Moving on to item F. Item F reads, "Resolution authorizing the Town to Connecticut Communities Challenge Grant Application to the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development for the proposed Enfield Station TOD project. Be it resolved that the filing of an application by the Town of Enfield and the amount not to exceed $4 million is hereby approved, and that the town manager is hereby authorized and directed to file such application with the Commissioner of the Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information to execute such other documents as may be required by the Commissioner to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for its state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered. To execute any amendments, recessions, and revisions thereto, interact as an authorized representative of the Town of Enfield date prepared September 26, 2022, prepared by the Office of Community Development." So, so moved.
Second.
Counselor Mangini and Deputy Mayor Sakala. Now, so the work we've done to remediate Le Mania and the Strand stands as the town's match for this application, and I think it was 1.3 million, and that was demolition, testing, and construction monitoring. So any other discussion in regard to this? Yep. Counselor, Counselor Ludwig.
Hi, Nelson, question for you. I'm for this. My only concern is when we saw this, what is the investment from the private developer? That's.
Right now, they're committing, so I'll give you a little update on where we stand with everything. So this is round two of the Connecticut Community Challenge Grant Program, it's probably the last round of this state grant opportunity. We applied for round one for the Higgins Park Project, which we ultimately didn't get because we really just, that project only provided a public and mobility improvement, a public space improvement. The state, the approvals which were made in April, there were a total of 12 projects. Seven of those, of those 12 projects were all geared towards downtown hub development TOD projects. So to answer your question regards to developer equity, they are committing upfront $700,000 equity commitment at a minimum. It's going to take more, depending on the sources of funding for this project. So just to give the council, for those in the council not aware, right now, the plan for the project is two mixed-use buildings with commercial spaces on the first floor, 55 units, one to two bedroom apartments on the upper three floors, affordable workforce housing, and it's going to, right now, the property on, where the property on, the preferred developer is evaluating whether or not they're only going to be utilizing the town-owned properties, but they're also looking at the option of exercising the acquisition of possible adjacent properties to maximize their development. A total of 80% of the units are going to be affordable workforce units, with people earning 60% of the area median income. The area median income is, for Hartford County, it's the average income someone makes in Hartford County, it's approximately $78,000. So 80% of those units are going to be for people making 60% or less of the AMI. 20% of the units will be market rate. There's also going to be support service, services for the households, such as job training, community health services, financial counseling, social services, as part of the amenities that the property manager is going to provide to the tenants living at these facilities. So right now, the developer equity, $700,000 commitment, the overall grant is 4,000, it's a $25 to $30 million project. Ultimately, the schedule is going to be contingent upon them obtaining low-income housing tax credits through the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. That's going to fund approximately 60% of the overall development. Now, what other sources they get as part of this development, there's going to be a mortgage they're going to have to take on, there's going to be other state subsidies that they're going to seek as part of the overall project, but they're at risk now. By next, I'm going to say by next October, November, when they submit the application for the low-income housing tax credits, if they don't proceed in obtaining this, these tax credits, then ultimately, the project will not be completed. Contingent upon that, it's very competitive, which is why they have to have all their bucks in a row before they submit the application to chapel for the housing tax credit.
That's why I'm just, just a tad concerned, I mean, 700 grand, they should be putting in more. I mean, we're putting in, we've already put in 1.2 million, you know, it's, it's an important project. They're relying on government money, which, again, I get nervous, because they should be putting in more of their equity, if we want to talk about equity here. Again, the project's important for, again, housing that's affordable, but if they're not willing to put more money in, I have to, then this turns into simply, we're getting federal dollars to bail them out, and the project, again, doesn't go anywhere. And how long, so my question is, how, for the $4 million, what do they have to show to apply for the $4 million?
The local map is 2 million. 1.3 is already been, when we created this application, again, they're putting in $700,000 of equity. There's going to be debt and financing as part of the overall project.
But they need to declare that at some point, Nelson, that's my point.
Correct. As part of this application, this is, this was their first funding source they're applying. There's going to be five or six different sources of funding as part of the overall.
I just hope it's, more is part of their funding, I guess that's my point. I agree with you, I'm for the, for this, but getting concerned that it's actually turning into more that we're funding than they are. They should at least be an equal partner with us on this. That's my point. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree in some regard with Counselor Ludwig. You know, I wish that there were folks lining up out the door to do business in Enfield and to build this kind of housing in Enfield, for a number of reasons, and I think to some extent just ignorance, they aren't. But we are really receptive to that development, I think we're doing a lot here to make sure it actually happens. Again, back to that metaphor, you know, it's a fire, we got to make sure that keeps going until people do see this is a great place to do business, we got to revitalize Thompsonville. So I think this makes a lot of sense, but I certainly would love to see the developer do all this, I just, I understand that the reality is a little bit more complicated.
Okay, thank you very much. Sheila, roll call, please.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Four.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Four.
Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nelson.
Against.
Counselor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Antonella.
Four.
That's 10 in favor, one against, and no abstentions.
Item G, discussion resolution, the resolution authorizing the EMS chief to waive a portion of the fees up to $500. Be it resolved that the town council does hereby designate the EMS chief to act as the authorized representative of the Town of Enfield in waiving fees up to $500.
So moved.
Deputy Mayor Sakala, and seconded by Counselor Mangini. There any discussion on this? I know that there were previous questions answered prior to our meeting, so Counselor Nelson.
Through the mayor to the town manager, I know in the past, when we created Enfield EMS, Enfield residents who did not have insurance or were responsible to pay part of it, they were billed three times, then the bill was disregarded. The resident did not have to pay the bill. This $500, is it for Enfield residents only? And if that's the case, are we billing Enfield residents now? Because otherwise, after three times, they don't get billed, so what does he need the 500 bucks for?
Counselor, Chief Rigott is on the call, so her question, she can answer your questions directly. She had outlined some of the process in an email that was sent earlier this morning, but for your specific questions, she would be the best person to address them.
Yeah, Chief, Chief Rigott, welcome. If you could answer Counselor Nelson's question, and I know, and I thank you for replying back to that email earlier that answered, I believe, like, six questions in regard to this. But thank you for that.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So to answer your question, we bill everybody that uses our service and is transported to the hospital. There is some differences between resident and non-residents in how we bill, set by council. One of those is the Medicare waiver for residents, we don't charge the copay, and non-residents are sent to collections if they're delinquent on their accounts. Does that answer the question?
It answers part of it, but what about residents who do not have insurance at all?
So everybody would be billed. We send three bills to all residents and non-residents. The only people that we push through to collections agencies are non-residents.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep. Thank you, Chief, greatly appreciate that. Sheila, roll call.
Counselor Ungeyer, sorry.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sakala.
Four.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Four.
Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nelson.
Four.
Counselor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Antonella.
Four.
11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Item H, discussion resolution, ARPA funds to repair the Shaker Pines spillway. Be it resolved that the town council does hereby designate $75,000 from the ARPA funds for the repair of the Shaker Pines spillway, and to provide grant guidance to seek additional funds for the $151,000 proposed project, date prepared October 3, 2022, prepared by the town manager's office. Counselor Mangini.
Second.
And a second by Deputy Mayor Sakala. Counselor Hopkins, and then Counselor Finger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This is a, I think, an area that's been known about for a long time. This, this, just to describe it to folks, is a spillway which allows the lake to release water, such that flooding is controlled in that area of town. I think there's been a lot of discussion about doing something around this project for some years, for whatever reason, never acted upon. So that, you know, that specter of maybe we have a significant flooding issue in town has been there for some time. I'm very happy that the council is considering this. I would, I would, I would move to make one small amendment in the highlight section that says additional funds of up to $75,000 may be allocated during the capital improvement project planning toward, during the budget cycle in order to ensure the project is able to move forward. I think we should really express the intent that we, we want to use, that we want to use capital improvement dollars to make sure this project is completed. I understand there is some resources that the town manager's office will be able to marshal to help the Shaker Pines Lake Association, maybe find some grants to make up for that remaining $75,000, but I think we should communicate, our intent is to, to fix this critical infrastructure in town. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you.
So I second that.
So, all right, so we have a motion to change the one word from may, made to will, and. and so, Councillor Hopkins, that's your motion, and second by Councillor Despard.
Well, this may change my vote the way I was going to vote now, so we need to discuss the amendment. So I, I'm not in favor of the amendment. I, again, I want to be able to help, but again, it should not come out of capital improvement and ARPA funds. There should be some, again, coordination, coordination, working together. The towns shouldn't eat this entire money. They are a private association, and again, most, if you went to go to, use the beach, they would, you most likely wouldn't be allowed to use it. So again, that changes my vote here. I'm willing to be a partner here, but not to fund the whole thing.
Councillor Despard.
So, so for decades, this private organization has been providing a public service and maintaining this spillway for the town, so I just, I feel like, you know, that's something that, again, they didn't have to do that, so I absolutely support this, and I think that it's misguided not to.
Councillor Finger.
Well, first of all, they maintain it for the town. It's not the town's property. All right, I've been in DPW for years. We've never, ever, ever have touched that spillway because it's not ours. Now, again, I agree with Councilor Ludwig, you know, about supporting it, but, you know, everybody wants ARPA money. Everybody wants ARPA money. You know, you want to do the fire department, you want to do this, we want to do that, we want to try to help the small business out. We're just kind of like depleting everything that we have left. There's got to be other funds to help them to be partnership in with this, but don't say it's because, you know, they're doing it for the town. They're doing it for the lake association. And you know I have a lot of good friends up there and family. Again, you know, you have to look at it logically and just say, listen, it's just like our dam, you know, the town dam here, right down the street from us. We had to maintain that. We had to rebuild that three or four times when I was down there. Now it's rebuilt, and it rains, and if you don't open the gate, it floods out John Street area, and it floods out, you know, behind there by Lynch Terrace. We've had a lot of issues with that down in that area, if anybody remembers that. That's why we have to open up that gate when it gets to a certain level, right where the bridge is. It just doesn't overfall and just, and that's it. They use that spillway to help maintain a level of the lakes, not just during storms, but during their process of when they want to do dredging or whatever the case may be. So it's not, it's not, they were helping the town, we're helping them. But again, I don't think we should be, I agree with Councilor Ludwig, because ARPA funds, guys, you want everything to be ARPA funds, but you keep depleting it. Hang on, I'm at the floor. You know, just, just, you know, step back a second and find other funding to help them out. Again, I'm behind all that association people. I really am. But we got to stop using ARPA funds for everything and everything. There's nothing left. It's done, it's gone, especially for what you want. I'm good, thank you.
Councillor Despard, then we'll go to Councillor Santinella.
So I do agree in part with what you're saying, but, you know, they do maintain it for the lake, but if that goes, or they don't maintain it, it affects a vast majority of the town. We would be, we would be having flooding all over the place. So that's, that's why I think that this is completely necessary.
Okay, thank, thank you. Councillor Santinella.
Just my comment, I mean, the point of having ARPA funds is to spend them to zero. That's why we were given them, and the options for us is to decide where we're going to spend them. So, you know, that's what we're doing with our ARPA funds, and we've done a lot with it. It's really, it was eye-opening to see that something that was such a piece of critical infrastructure that impacted a lot of the rest of the town is in private hands. I've just never seen something so important being in private people's hands. Nonetheless, the implications, as I understand it, from the attachments here, if this spillway goes and there's downstream flooding, property damage, any of that, we are noticed that there is a problem here, and the town is on the hook for any of that, for failing not to do anything about this. And, and so, when we're talking about, is that, and through the merits of the town attorney, is that, is that correct? Is my understanding of that correct?
Yeah, I want to be careful. I don't want to give you a spot legal opinion on the fly without having reviewed all the topographical maps and everything. Your inclination is probably correct.
Okay, thank you. So, so, you know, we're looking at one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to prevent potentially millions of dollars of property damage if this thing does go. I'm hoping that the grant, there's grant money that's available that will cover the whole thing and not need us to use ARPA funds or CIP money, but I think we need to make the commitment that we're going to fix it. We just, we can't, it doesn't make sense to allow something like this to just go unaddressed anymore, and it's been raised before. It's just, and we have an opportunity not to put the full burden on people, on taxpayers, to use ARPA funds to do that. So I'm going to support this. I think this is a really great use, and I do believe that we should look at the other options so that we minimize and work really hard to minimize any of the impact that this is going to have on our taxpayers. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mangini, and then I'm after.
I will be supporting this resolution. This issue has been going on for a long time before all of you have been on the council, all of you, and I'm glad to see that it's finally come to surface where we are going to actually vote on this and hopefully, you know, make some progress in addressing the issue. And this project qualifies for ARPA more than probably some of the other projects that we've got. So, and to Councilman Santinella's point, you know, if there is a serious situation, it will adversely affect the town, not just the lake area. So it's imperative that we move forward on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm just going to make a couple of comments in regard to this. This is an issue that, that has been brought up for many years. It's been ignored for many years. I think we've made a commitment not to ignore this particular issue, and yes, it's privately owned, but the implications that have been previously stated, taking a look at the presentation and the paperwork that we received, this affects the whole town. This goes from the lake all the way down to the Connecticut River. Heaven forbid something happens. The implications is it costs us far more money than one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or one-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand dollars. We're allocating seventy-five-thousand dollars of ARPA funds that we have, and it follows the guidelines to a T. We're going to be executing and looking for grants. This is just a one word to state, to make a commitment that if we have to use these funds out of CIP, we will use them to help fund this project. I am in total favor, and I'll let Councillor Nelson state what he has to state, but we will be voting on the motion, and then we're going to be moving forward.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure, and the town clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, I think you're still on the amendment, right? And I'm not sure that the amendment actually changes the resolution.
Because.
Correct. Correct.
That was my question.
All right. Okay.
So there is no amendment.
So, so we will just be voting on the resolution, correct? Okay.
I think you have to deal with the amendment before you get to the main motion.
Because amending the highlights does not amend the motion. The motion is, you know, the bottom section.
That's what he's highlighting. That's what he's changing, the bottom section.
Under the, under the highlights, the motion is to change made to will.
So just to clarify, my motion doesn't change, my motion that I raised doesn't change what the recommendation says. It's really just important, symbolic meaning of the town, you know.
But it's not part of the resolution.
That's true, that's true. So I, you know, maybe I should clarify in my motion to say a motion for, to change the language of the highlight. It is maybe a tedious thing, but I think it is very important.
Councillor Pisner.
Okay.
Oh, Councillor Nelson, I'm sorry. Councillor Nelson, go ahead.
Okay, being a private entity, how much does Shaker Pines Lake Association have in their reserves? Has anybody looked into that? Are they physically responsible over there? Second, how deep is that spillway? I'm asking each one of you. Who knows how deep that is? No, not many of you know, but the bottom line is, it's like four feet. It's, it was a stream that they put a little dam in, and it's small, it's smaller than this dais, and they did that so they could raise the lake up a little bit, and it still runs through that stream and runs along Shaker Pines Fire Department. I went out there, I looked at it, I understand. Are we going to start taking on drainage problems for condos and PUDs? Because that's exactly what this is. We're taking public money to work on private property, and they're a lake association, and the number one thing that makes it a lake is their spillway. So they should have funds to maintain and update or upgrade this spillway if it needs it, and maybe not, you know, write checks to people who are filing lawsuits against the town of Enfield. So I do have a problem with this because if we approve this, we're setting precedence for all other projects in Enfield, condos and PUDs, where it comes to drainage issues, where detention ponds may flood or anything. This is so far upstream. If we take time and we tabled this and had the engineers come down with the maps and show us if this spillway, if you took the gate right out of it, it's not going to flood Enfield. It's not the mall, it's none of that area through there, it's going to make things a little wetter than what they are now, but it's not what you guys are setting this out to be, and I can't support this because we don't do work on private property. We just sat here and listened to the WPC director tell us about the serious problems we've got coming our way, and we're not talking one-hundred-thousand, we're talking millions that the taxpayers are going to get a huge tax increase on to fund, and I have to agree with whoever said we're spending money like it's nothing. We have our own projects that are serious that need to be addressed. I cannot support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So, moving to the correction on the highlight, do we have to make that correction and vote on that before we vote on the resolution?
I will have to defer to the town attorney for that because the resolution itself and the part that will go in the minutes is the be it resolved the town council does hereby designate seventy-five-thousand from ARPA funds to repair the Shaker Pines. The highlights don't go into the permanent record of the town, so as to whether that is a legal amendment, I'm going to have to defer to the town attorney for that.
Yeah, and I'm going to have to shrug my shoulders and say, you would, even if the amendment is approved, you're still only appropriating or designating seventy-five-thousand tonight. You're making a future promise, which I'm not sure isn't enforceable.
Sheila, roll call.
Thank you.
Just so we're clear, this is on the amendment.
This is for the amendment.
Correct.
Okay. Councillor Ungayr.
Against.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Four.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Despard.
Four.
Councillor Finger.
Against.
Councillor Hopkins.
Four.
Councillor Ludwig.
Against.
Councillor Mangini.
Four.
Councillor Nelson.
Against.
Councillor Pisner.
Against.
And Councillor Santinella.
Four.
Okay, so that's six in favor and five against, and no abstentions.
Okay, now we will be voting on the resolution.
We don't have a discussion on resolution, we have a discussion on amendment. Resolution discussion or no?
We're going to be doing a roll call. I think we've already had our discussion. Roll call, please.
Councillor Ungayr.
Against.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Four.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Despard.
Four.
Councillor Finger.
For property taxpayers in this town, against.
Councillor Hopkins.
Four.
Councillor Ludwig.
Against.
Councillor Mangini.
Four.
Councillor Nelson.
Against.
Councillor Pisner.
Against.
Councillor Santinella.
Four.
That's six in favor, five against, and no abstentions.
Okay, thank you.
And I should, Mr. Mayor, I should also note.
Excuse me. In attendance is Leslie Cunningham, president of the association, and so, just wanted to recognize you. Okay, you're welcome. Item I, resolution to authorize non-union wage increases for the full and part-time eligible employees. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby approve in accordance with the charter authority granted to the Town Council and adherence to the policy and procedure established by the Town Manager that, one, section one, the aggregate sum of one-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars in COLA wage increases is authorized for all qualified non-union full-time employees of the town in accordance with fiscal year 2122 performance evaluations approved by the Town Manager, section two. The aggregate sum of thirty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-fifty-eight dollars in COLA wage increases is authorized for all qualified non-union regular part-time employees of the town in accordance with fiscal year 2122 performance evaluations as approved by the Town Manager, section three. The application of the increases referenced therein shall be applied retroactively to the date of July 1, 2022, date prepared September 28, 2022, prepared by the Town Manager's office.
So moved.
Deputy Mayor Sikala, and seconded by Councillor Mangini.
I'd like to make a motion to table this and move it to executive session. This is employee-related matters. It should have been discussed in executive session before it was brought here on the
Councillor, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Sikala.
So we're going to move forward and vote on this. This was discussed in leadership four weeks ago, three weeks ago, and there was direction to go back to your caucuses and discuss it, and then we discussed it again in leadership with documentation from the Town Manager's Office. Talk to your caucus.
Councillor Finger.
So before I went unaffiliated, and I was part of the caucus of Democratic Party, this was never brought up to me, so I don't see why you're getting so bitty about it. I just think that Councillor Nelson is right, we should go to executive session. We've discussed this before with the other contracts, or tried to. You know, you had the police department, we sat there and talked about it. How long did you have the police department information for? You know, there's questions and answers. If you want me to bring them up, then I'll do it, but the whole thing is that, I agree, this was supposed to be done in executive session first, not caucus, just executive session. That's the way it's supposed to be done. We thought this before.
Councillor Pisner.
Okay, I guess my concern is, I have no idea who's getting these raises. The list that I was given today, because we asked for it, there's some repetition on here that a couple of these people got raises just in February that were quite large. So I'm looking at this from a taxpayer's point of view. Every, every meeting, we seem to be giving people raises, and I have no clarification. I don't know who's getting this money, and this is why it shouldn't be talked about on this floor.
Assistant Town Manager Steve Belinda.
I've been here over twelve-and-a-half years, and the way people get raises is usually on July 1, the beginning of the fiscal year. If they did get a raise before that time, it was a wage adjustment or a promotion, that did not make them ineligible for getting COLAs here on after. As long as they're not on probation, as long as they're not a new employee that is in their first six months of their employment or in their three months if it's a probation, they're eligible for COLAs. That's how I've been practicing it since I've been here for twelve-and-a-half years. If they're a new employee, they don't get it. If they have a poor performance evaluation, they don't get it. If they had responsibilities taken away from them, they don't get it, but since I've been here, that's been the rules, are the personnel rules, and we've been following it ever since, and that's what non-union employees have come to expect. So to start changing the rules of the game after they've been performing for the town and working for the town. and working for the town, it's hard to keep them motivated.
So the list.
Excuse me.
I thought he was talking to me. I was asking him a question, he answered it.
Here's the floor. She has the floor.
Excuse me. I don't know if he, were you finished?
I just wanted to address the people in February who got raises. They did get a wage adjustment. That's not a COLA. There's a big difference.
Can I ask my next question? Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm looking on here, and some of these are the bus drivers, the dial-a-rides that we talked about two weeks ago. They were given a raise two weeks ago. So is that part of this money?
Two weeks ago, it was not the dial-a-ride drivers. It was the dispatchers that were impact bargaining because of what we did to them. We gave them more responsibilities so their union impact bargains because we gave them more than was outside their job description. It was not all the dial-a-ride drivers, it was not all the magic carpet drivers, it was the dispatchers, two dispatchers, that we had to impact bargain. The ones that you're seeing here are non-union drivers. They work less than this threshold number to be in the collective bargain agreement. They're working 16 hours or less. We have some people that drive that are in the union, and we have people that drive even less that are not in the union. So they don't get orphaned and never get a raise.
That's fine. I just would like, moving forward, to not be blindsided because I didn't hear about it. And I don't know who on here is actually getting raises.
Let me.
And, Steve?
Do the names matter? I thought the positions would be adequate. I didn't know if the name was important of who's getting a raise.
You know what, it's taxpayers' dollars.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're talking, we are the fiduciaries. And right now, we are spending money, I think, I have to agree. That's what we're doing, is signing checks. And it frightens me.
Well, I guess in fairness to the non-union, I don't give you the names of all employees in the collective bargain agreements either. I've never had that request. So I don't know why we treat the non-union differently than the people in the collective bargain agreements.
Counselor Ungary.
I think if we're discussing salaries, we should do it privately and do it during executive session. Can I make a motion that we?
No.
To table. I made that motion.
To table.
To go to executive session. With this, because I have.
Okay, I support that.
No. Well, let's vote on the motion.
Well, I have one more. This is employees, they're performance-based. These are performance-based raises. He just said it. And I'm going to be honest with you, and this is why I don't want to do this in the public. Ellen, I sat with you Friday, and there's a particular employee on this list that's not in good standings. And they're getting a raise.
They're not.
It's unacceptable.
They're not getting a raise.
It's on the list, Steve.
Okay, put point of order here. Let's, one at a time, please.
Point of order. This is why we should be in executive session.
Point of order.
But you guys want to force this through.
They're not.
This isn't right. We have a right to talk about this.
Counselor Ludwig.
Just to, mayor, assistant town manager, again, we've done this in the past, but it's never been just a straight COLA. I mean, some of this has been performance-based. The manager made a recommendation on who was performing and who wasn't. So it was based on their performance. We just give carte blanche 3% raises every year. Sorry, Steve, I just want to clarify that. We have given COLA adjustments, but it's not been 3% carte blanche. It was based on evaluations by the management team on who was performing well and who wasn't. So just to clarify, I'm not saying we haven't done this, but please, you can't speak that way and say we're just carte blanche and giving people 3% every year. Because we're not, and we haven't.
We're voting on the motion to table. And no favor.
Right now, we are going to be voting on the motion to table. Item I, to go into executive session.
To put it on that agenda.
To put it on the agenda. No, we're not going to go into executive session now. All right, we are.
May I just, point of order, as town attorney, I think I get to weigh in on legal issues. I'm looking at Connecticut General Statute's Section 1-200 subsection 6, I think it is. And if you were going to go into executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, or dismissal of a public employee, then it would be appropriate to go into executive session. I'm not sure on the fly that talking about COLA adjustments qualifies. You're not talking about any specific employee, you're talking about COLA adjustments across a class. I'm not prepared to go on record to say it would be appropriate for executive session.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to have a roll call on, or hands or something, whatever.
By a raise of hands, if you are in favor of tabling to executive session, raise your hands. Excuse me.
It's okay, Bob.
It was down.
It's only a conversation.
It was down. All right. Okay, against?
This is insanity. This is absolute insanity.
Okay.
Insanity.
All right, motion fails. So.
Can you stop? He'll run the meeting.
Excuse me.
Point of order.
Excuse me. At this point in time, we're going to move forward with this, and we're going to do a roll call right now. All right, we've had discussions, we're going to be moving forward with it. The motion has failed. This is just for COLA increases. Roll call, please.
I have a question.
Roll call, please.
I don't think you have the authority to shut down the questions, Bob. He has a question, it's on the table.
Did you raise your hand? Okay.
A point of order could be raised, that discussion is not being considered.
Excuse me.
No, no, I'm not making a point of order for that. I hear no point of order.
It's all in, is this to the town? I'm sorry. To the town manager, to assistant town manager, Steve. So the question had asked earlier was about the thresholds of non-union insurance premiums, you know, for the raises here, the 3%. So the, if you make less than 30,000, you're paying 3% of your insurance premium cost to the town.
Correct.
30,000 to 60, well, I don't know, to 60,000. 5999 is 8%. Annual salary 59 to 11%. When was the last time that any of these people were brought up to other union or town cost percentages to help pay for insurance to take the burden off the taxpayers? Our union is at 17%.
Correct.
Other unions are at 17%. Why, when was the last time these were brought up? Or are we planning on helping them to help the town cut back its costs? Thank you. That's the question.
I'm prepared to answer that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilor Finger, and you raise a very good question. Because when I came here over 12 and a half years ago, I did not take the town health insurance, but I did notice the disparity in why are union members paying more than non-union members? And I question that because non-union employees are the most vulnerable employee. They have no contractual rights, they have no negotiating leverage, they have no just cause protection. They are at-will employees. They work at the will of their supervisor. So when I explored a little further, I wanted to know why is it that they are treated differently, not only with lower health insurance, but they also have a cafeteria plan that no union gets? I learned that they try to incentivize people not to go into the union. Stay where you are, we will give you a cafeteria plan, we will give you lower health insurance so we don't have people flocking to the union. That doesn't always work because we did have non-union employees forming a union, i.e. the Teamsters, because they weren't happy with their health insurance coverage. Although they are paying more health insurance than if they had stayed as non-union, they wanted to go and unionize. So I use this to my leverage to try to entice employees to leave unions and come to non-union positions because a lot of times it's a good breeding ground for clerical employees. I can think of many employees who have left the union. I've enticed them. If you come here, you get lower health insurance, you get cafeteria plan, and you don't have to pay union dues. And the only problem is that you don't have just cause protection. You don't have that safety net that they have come to enjoy being in a union. But you know what? I have a lifetime contract renewed every day I do my job, and I tell that to them. So if they're willing to put their work ethic and where their mouth is, they will leave and they will come to a non-union position. And I try to entice them with that. And that's what I've been doing ever since here. And we've had some great employees who are former union members who are now in the non-union sector, and they're thriving. So I made benefit what I inherited, and I've never looked back as far as how we've been doing it.
Right, so, thank you, because I know that they don't always get raises every year.
Correct.
So, you know.
They're vulnerable.
Yeah, I just wanted that question to answer. That's all, and I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I think, you know, like spillways, like sewers, workforce requires maintenance. And we're going to lose out on people if we don't do that. I think it's fair to have a difference of vision. You know, if some folks want to cheap out on that, that's fine. I think we want to pay that down. What I'm not okay with is name-calling up your folks. I think we need to do the business at hand. I think there's a way, there's a procedure for doing that, but I am really disappointed in that. But I think, folks, we have a difference in vision, let's just vote on it. But please, please be civil. This is ridiculous.
Sheila, roll call, please.
Councilor Ungary.
Because of how this is presented, I'm going to vote against.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Four.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Councilor Despard.
Four.
Councilor Finger.
Four.
Councilor Hopkins.
Four.
Councilor Ludwig.
Abstain.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nelson. Councilor Pisner.
Abstain due to lack of information.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
That is, I'm sorry, give me a minute, eight in favor, one against, and two abstentions.
Thank you. Item J, the resolution authorizing the town council to create a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. Be it resolved that the town council does create a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee.
So moved.
Deputy Mayor Sikala, and seconded by Councilor Mangini. Okay, discussion? Yes.
Okay, so first I want to go on saying that I think this is a great idea to start this committee. But to Zach's point, this is the first time we've seen it. And I think it's an important committee. So reading through it, I received this at a hard copy at 8:00 on Friday night. I called my minority lead on Saturday morning. She said it was not on the leadership, which they've confirmed. So this is the first time tonight that I'm hearing all these wonderful people speak about it. And I have to say, I think it's a great idea. But there are parts of it that I have questions about. I think there's some of it I would like to see changed. I think this has to be tabled for a special meeting where we can sit together and discuss how this moves forward. I don't even know who wrote this draft up. Did it come from Ellen? Did it come, who wrote this draft? Is it a draft that came from the state? I have no idea. So again, I think it's a great idea. I'd like to move forward with it, but I think it needs further discussion so that we all have input. I believe that would be the fair thing to do.
Counselor Ungary.
I want to thank a lot of the residents that came up and spoke. A lot of you said some really great things and have great ideas. However, I just read this last night. I was out of town, I didn't have internet access, and for the first time I read it was last night. So this is too fast for me. Some of the verbiage in here, I thought, was a little bit questionable because it could very possibly subvert our charter. So I think it, just with a little bit more work, then we could have something better. That's all.
Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important to have this discussion now. I mean, we've gotten a proposal from a group in town that's done a lot of work thinking about this, and we have this in front of us today. Personally, I think it's important to have insulation from the council. I think this committee should, you know, be created, have somewhat of a charge, and then do its own work on creating the rules it should follow, apart from the council. Because this stuff is sensitive. 100%, we heard a lot of people talk about the high level of motions that these things bring up. And I think it's really important that politics shouldn't play a role. So I would support passing this here. I think letting them do, finish that work is really important. But let's finish discussing it today.
Councilor Mangini.
Thank you. Where do I start? You know, this is a very important issue, as Councilman Hopkins just pointed out. Discussion is very good and healthy. However, this group has worked very hard to bring forward these ideas and to make a positive change in our town, in our society. I applaud them tremendously. I most definitely am going to be supporting this. I don't see any reason to have all kinds of discussion. It's a matter of being diverse and fair to all members of our society, of our town. And we need to start somewhere. And thank you to the group who started the ball. And let's carry the ball forward, and let's get this done. Thank you.
Counselor Pisner.
Okay. So once again, I think this is a great idea. I'm not arguing that point. The point I'm saying is we weren't included. Everybody seems that side to know that this paperwork was in progress. I wasn't called and said, you know, we're having this, would you like to meet with the folks? And I know you're smiling, but I never got a call. So is that inclusion? I'm sorry, I know maybe you think I'm out of place, but I want this to go through. And I want to work with you. And I want this to happen. But I'm saying that, again, the first time you read something, a lot of things go through your mind. And there's parts of this that I'm not comfortable with. I'd like to see some of the words changed. I'd like to sit and talk and ask you why certain things were written the way they were written, so we can have a healthy discussion. That's all I'm asking for. So I'm asking you to table this so that we can have a special meeting. They can be invited, the people who did work on this, so we can collaborate together and come up with a good idea for this committee. That's all I'm asking, is to give us some time to digest this so that we do it right. So again, I'm making a motion that we table this to have a special meeting so that we can come together and put together a good committee. That's what I'm asking.
Counselor Ungary.
I just wanted to add that there was a comment made that you don't want to make this political. However, a whole half of the dais wasn't included in on this conversation from the start. So, and if this is going to be a council-appointed committee, you know, we'd all want to be a part of coming up with the committee and contribute to it, and we're going to appoint people to it. So why wouldn't you include everybody?
I agree that we should table it.
Counselor Finger.
I'll hold off.
Okay, Counselor Despard.
Just briefly, I wanted to say that I think this is like a decade or so too late, so I don't want to waste any more time. And I do just want to invite everybody here to surge meetings. They happen on the third Wednesday of each month at 6:30. Usually it's on Zoom. We have a Facebook page, Facebook Surge, you know, it's a pretty known thing. And if people want to contribute more, that would be really great, to see more people at our meetings. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor Finger.
All right. So I like this. You know, I mean, it's a very, very, very good document, but there's a couple of things I have issues with. And I just want to hear it. There's not much, just a couple of things. One is the term.
I'm sorry. It's been a quick night. I'm sorry. I think this is a really good thing. But there's just a couple of issues, you know, wording here that I have issues with. The term length. You know, you have five years, and you got three years. We don't have other committees that have those, I don't think we have any other committees that have those length of terms. I think if you can, just think about it, make it, knock it down to the way that we have other committees, their term lengths are four, or two and two years, or, you know, whatever, four and two. But these five years and threes, you know, it just, it makes sense to keep it more consistent with other committees, the length of terms. The second thing I have is, you have, Counselor Despard, do you have it in front of you? This thing here? Okay, the diversity paperwork. Down versus structure, okay? Second paragraph down. All right? And on the third line, it says of colored members of the LGBTQ committee and committee, individuals with disabilities, and immigrants, right, to the United States. You see that? I like to make a motion to add legal before the word immigrant. Legal immigrants. I just, that's just my feeling. You know, I mean, I just, to me, it seems like you're going to invite anybody that comes across the board and put them on this committee. But, oh, mine's a discussion, but I'll be willing to table it. But I just, you know, nobody get mad at me. But that's just the way I think, the way I feel. I'm sorry. It's just the way it is. In fact, I'm not going to apologize for the way I think. I just think that the word legal should be in front of it. That's all. And those are the only two things I got. That was it.
Counselor Nelson.
This committee is to be formed to have an all-inclusive town. But right in the structure, it says, resident of the town of Vanfield and shall not be an elected official or member of a town committee.
What's wrong with a town committee member?
And now one person has mentioned the budget. What's the budget? Says there's a budget in here to be set by us. What is it? I think that's a pretty valid question. Anyone? Through the mayor to the town manager? We're going to vote on something? We don't even know what the budget is?
But I think that it would most likely be funded through the process where you fund all the other nonprofits that come through the budget process. It wouldn't be connected to what you're doing tonight.
But then it's, then why does it say the budget of the committee will be determined by the town council? If we're forming the committee right now, what's their budget?
They don't have one if you were to vote yes tonight.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ludwig?
Yeah, my just concern too, I mean, I'd like to see the term limits be more consistent with other commissions. And I was going to bring up the budget question, because there is other language that says, you know, they can commit it, they can petition the council for ad hoc funding of cost, yeah, limited to subject matter experts. So I mean, I think we just need to have an idea of what it may cost, because it sounds like there'll be ad hoc costs as well. And I think that's a fair request, just to ask before we approve the committee. And again, and it sounds like they want to make some recommendations on our hiring practices. I don't know, does that have to be run by the union? I'm just, I'm not saying, I'm just asking the question. I mean, these are questions I'd like to ask before, I think, I support the committee, but this is part of the resolution. I mean, I don't know why we can't have these answers before we say yes. And especially with, when we're saying there's going to be ad hoc funding, that always concerns me. And again, the terms of, they should be more consistent with our committees and/or, I agree, if they don't want the council involved, I'm okay with that. But they shouldn't, their terms should be similar to our terms and/or other committees that we have already. I don't see that's an unreasonable request. I mean, that's consistent. And again, I'm okay with not being involved if they don't want us to be. I'm okay with that. But, I mean, five years and three, I think is a little bit excessive, in my opinion. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Mangini, and then I-
Yeah, just quickly, I think maybe we're missing the message here. The resolution simply and very, you know, succinctly states, be it resolved that the town council creates a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. This resolution does not address specifics such as budgets, such as numbers of people and where they come from. I think, I think I know, the message here is that we're doing something, like Councilman Despard mentioned, that's long overdue to address issues of inequity and, you know, trying to bring people together, trying to have more compassion, trying to be understanding. That's the goal of this committee. This committee is, I don't see where the goal is, well, we have X amount of dollars to go and do this, that. And the other thing, the goal is to create the uniformity and the camaraderie and to make our town more socially acceptable. Maybe I'm misunderstanding, but that's my interpretation of the meaning of this committee. So I definitely am going to support this, and I think we should get on with it.
Okay, thank you. Getting on to, you know, business with this committee. A few weeks ago, we made a commitment to not look the other way, not turn our cheek to an incident that happened at the beginning of, or at the end of August, beginning of September. We had a community conversation. Many people attended. And there are several of you that did not attend. And now, all of a sudden, that we have people that have taken the initiative, and I think have done a pretty good job in coming up with a draft, and let me just say, a draft proposal on this committee for the, you know, the diversity, equity, and inclusion committee, that this is the next step after our community conversation that we've had. This is, this is the next step, that we've taken initiative. There were people that have, that met, while many of us just threw it under the rug and we did not mention anything. Part of, and I'll take a little responsibility for myself. I was approached about this committee because that's the next step that was involved. When you have a thousand, or, you know, you get 20 people involved, nothing's going to get done. All right? They took it upon themselves. They came up, and I think that this is a pretty good committee. Maybe there might be a couple of things that could be changed, you know, on here. But on top of here, this is a draft, draft proposal. It's a good proposal. Once this committee and we pass this resolution, then we can talk about different particulars. But, you know, this is something that needs to be done, you know? We're taking this initiative, that we need to create this, this committee. And we're up here bickering because, oh, I wasn't involved, and I'm not going to vote for it. If you think it's a good idea, then vote for it. That's the bottom line. That's what we're looking at here. I think it's, I think it's a good thing that this town needs. Change is hard for people, and I get that. If you think it's good, then vote for it. If you don't think it's good, don't vote for it. But, you know, you don't have to say, oh, I wasn't involved, and I didn't, I didn't have my two cents to put into it. You'll have your two cents to put into it.
That's a point of order.
No? Okay, all right. Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, everybody can speak their piece. I'm speaking my piece, and we will move forward. Go ahead.
I have one more thing.
Nick, you want to address his comments, like you went after us? You want to address him, too?
I just want to say one more thing. Again, when something is given to us, and we have to make a decision that affects the entire community, every single resident, we have to vote in mind that that's what we're doing, is taking every resident into account. So when I'm giving a document, and I've got nothing on it, for me to say yes, even though I wanted to move forward, for me to say yes, without my questions answered, such as budget, such as term, all I wanted was that we could go and have a civil conversation about this? That's all I asked for tonight, was for us to meet in a special meeting and have a civil conversation. And it was turned into a finger pointing. So I will abstain from this tonight, not because I'm against it, but because I need more information for every resident out there that will call me and ask me about it. And I will be happy to sit and speak with all of you.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Just very briefly, I too actually was not involved in the creation of this committee and this draft. The first I saw of it was Friday. And you know what? I'm okay with that, because it's not about me. This is a draft proposal from a wonderful community committee that is bringing this to us, and this is a great step, too. And I'm okay, because it's not about me. And I'm fine voting on this, because I know that this is a great committee.
Thank you.
Counselor Finger.
So a couple of things. One is, really, the term limit is going to be my only challenge. I will remove my legal remark, legal thing before the immigrants, okay? I heard some whining and stuff like that about it. But I don't see where it says draft. Am I missing it?
Right at the top.
Next page.
Top of the second page.
So. My apologies, I didn't see, because I was looking at the first page, only the second page I wrote down. So.
Maybe at this point, motion to move the question.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm good now. Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't see the draft. My bad.
Point of order, yeah. I don't think you voted on the motion to table.
We're going to vote on the motion to table. All in favor to table?
Be table on that or no?
Okay, that's four. Against?
I'm going to table. I'm going to vote yes.
Five, six. Okay. Motion fails. All right. Now the main motion now. And roll call, Sheila.
Counselor Ungary.
I'm going to abstain.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Four.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Four.
Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nelson.
Against.
Counselor Pisner.
Abstain.
Abstain. Counselor Santinella.
Four.
That is eight in favor, one against, and two abstentions.
Item K, request for transfer of funds to close out the fiscal year 2021. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. Please see Attachment A for the account detail. You going to read them all off to us, please? No. So moved. Counselor Nelson.
Second.
And a second by Counselor Santinella. Any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Counselor Ungary.
She stepped out.
Okay, sorry. Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Four.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Despard.
Four.
Counselor Finger.
Four.
Counselor Hopkins.
Four.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nelson.
Four.
Counselor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Okay, item 12, any other business to come before this said meeting? None. 13, public communications. Is there anybody who would like to come, approach the council? Three minutes, Bob.
I'll be short.
Okay, thank you.
Bob TCats, 815 Woodgate. The difference between the population, there was a lot of corruption in the census takers this past census. Connecticut has 800 census tracts. The register of voters used as corrected census tracts to come up with the 39,000. The other thing that changed, they changed the residence from this original 2020 census to what the register of voters, they changed the residency of the prisoners. The prisoners have the residency of when they were arrested and put in prison. We only have 83 Enfield residents in the prison, even though there's over 2,000. So that's why there's a difference. As far as the oil reserve, Mike, I love you, but there was an article in Wall Street Journal, there's like 440 million barrels in the oil reserve. A barrel of oil is 40 gallons. They're depleting it by six gallons by putting alcohol. If they had pure gasoline, we'd be getting 10 miles per gallon more. But they wanted to stretch the reserves. The other thing is, the term is, when somebody comes over from another country, they're an illegal immigrant, no matter how they get here. That's federal law. If, when they get their census, get their citizenship, they're called a legal resident, excuse me, a legal immigrant. So you become an illegal immigrant, no matter how you get here, and when you get your citizenship, you're a legal immigrant, that's for life. My father came here in 1915. He had to wait till he was 24 years old before he could apply for his citizenship. I know that law has been changed, but that's it. Now, as far as the plates, the car plates, I'm not trying to degrade the council here. This has been gone over. I've been in town since 1957. This town council started in 63. This question has come up probably about six times, and it's been analyzed. The car plate thing is a very small percentage of the total taxes that are received. There's, there, in one of the dealerships, there's 25 Amazon fans over there, with half, half the plates on there from Massachusetts. And they're parked here every day at night. People, people have houses in Florida. They stay down in Florida six months and a day. They come up here to their house. They have a right to have a Florida plate on their car. You talk about the rental companies? I haven't rented a car yet that had a Connecticut plate, from rental companies right in town here. So one town did a spreadsheet and went over it, and they sort of found hardly any difference because you don't have, you don't have to put your, change your address on your registration until the registration ends. So that's the way it is in Connecticut set up. It's different in Massachusetts. There's a lot of mass cars. People, people visit people, they stay overnight. You can't say that they're doing something illegal. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council?
Honestly, I really appreciate your opinion and how you feel. But again, I've been living in Enfield for 45 years. And every single time, an issue, and I'm not talking about an instant, just wanting to have a conversation about it, it was always shut down. And when I say shut down, they wanted to discuss it more. They wanted to think about it more. I don't like that word here. You put this word over here. And that was one of the main reasons I wanted to speak again, because I have been in town long enough, and been in agencies, and been, and know that this happens over and over again. Every single time, the issue of inclusion, or diversity, or racism come up, is always put aside to another time, whether it's with the police officers, or whether with kids at school, is always another time. We have to discuss it more. And I do believe what they're saying is a draft. I implore you again- I implore you again, Marie, please go, please come to SURGE. Everybody have an opportunity to hear, not just the heart stories, but hear the data. So please, you know, like I say, I do respect your opinion, but I happen to have experienced many, many, many years here in Enfield with people saying, we need to talk about it. We need to discuss it. So I am thankful that it is moving forward. And please join us in all the discussions. You can have your say. We want to hear everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council?
Marcy Talicio, Coolidge Drive. I also, it's on. I also want to say thank you. This is long overdue, as we've said. This means a lot. We are happy to, you know, be part of this historic voting and passing of this committee. It, I promise that, you know, whatever we can do, whatever SURGE can do at this point to support the committee, we will do. And you're always welcome to ask questions. You know, I think most of you know how to reach me. But thank you.
Let me start off by saying that I am not a member of SURGE, but I am a resident of Enfield. I know here, in this particular setting, we have to be nice and cordial, which I appreciate that. But I'm willing to have a conversation with anyone after this, today, tomorrow, whenever. Because what we need to do is have courageous conversations, not, well, I was going to use the P-word to rhyme with tunk, but have these conversations. Why do we feel the way we do about each other? Why? There's a reason. We should be able to talk about it, okay? Without me or you being angry at each other. None of us are responsible for slavery. It happened. We know that. We should be able to talk about it while I get angry. Okay? If someone does not stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, we should be able to talk about why. Not just the action, but the reason behind the action. Talk about it. Maybe we'll have an understanding. Okay? I like talking with people. I'm a people person. I talk with everybody. You get it? If I make eye contact, I will talk to you. Don't care where we are. I swear to God. And my thing is this, again, humans first, Americans second. It is a matter, the color of your skin. Because if you need help at 12:00 midnight and I'm out there, you think I'm going to stop and not help you because of the color of your skin? That's ridiculous. Period. And I hope if you see me out there with a flat tire on 91, you'll stop and say, do you need help? Yes, yes, I do, as a matter of fact. Please. Enough of this nonsense, man. I mean, again, we can't stop the way people think. They're going to think the way they think no matter what. That's not the objective. The objective is to have a conversation, to see why we do and say the things that we do in private and public. So again, again, you're beautiful, all of you. I swear to God you are. But again, no one knows that until we open our mouths and open our ears. Otherwise, we're going to walk past, oh, he said that during the council meeting, he must be this. I don't care. I care about you. You, all of you. And I hope you care about me. That's what I got to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any other comments from anybody? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second by Counselor Nelson. All in favor? Unanimous. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.